Good afternoon, everyone. It is Monday, December the 6th, and we are here for a board workshop. The time is 1:03. The purpose of the workshop today is to go over multiple things. First, we have a guest here, Neola. He will be doing a presentation. Then, our second will be the agenda review for December 7th, which will be done by our superintendent. Next will be the priority workshop topics, along with the master plan for Riverdale. Ms. Givenelli will join us shortly via phone if she's not on as yet. Ms. Givenelli, are you with us yet? Ms. Givenelli? So when she does come, we will certainly bring her back and we will know that she's here with us. Moving right along, I guess I will have Mr. Tom Young will be doing the presentation. And Mr. Preburno, did you want to speak on the reason why we've asked him here?
Can you hear me okay? Yes. So, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of all of its options in terms of... ...sure that the board was aware of all of its particular options and developing policies.
Thank you. Mr. Young, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I cannot help but notice that most of the board members are wearing masks. I have one in my pocket. Any board member is uncomfortable with you not wearing a mask, I would be happy to put it off.
No, you're fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you. You should have received by now a front and backside of the little pamphlet and a PowerPoint presentation, seven pages. I'll zip through the PowerPoint as I speak, but I will not read it to you.
Thank you.
I believe that you're capable of reading that yourselves, and I suspect that most if not all of you have read it before this meeting. So, let me begin by telling you what the company provides and how we go about the process. And then we'll talk about costs. To begin with then, the oldest mission is to assist school leaders to address the implications of the ever-evolving federal and state laws, law, DOE, federal DOE and state DOE regulations, the Florida Administrative Code, and the case law as it affects school districts. We provide these services to over sixteen hundred school districts in seven states. The states are all Midwest, with the exception of Florida. We got to Florida in the year 2000 because the new superintendent of Brevard County was previously a superintendent and client of Neola in Ohio. And he knew of the company and knew of its product and wanted to bring it to Brevard. And that was the beginning. That's my wife's ring, so I was ready to jump. She's sitting right here, so I knew she wasn't calling.
Yeah, she's calling me.
So, in 2002, I was the assistant superintendent for Human Resources and Employee Relations in Charlotte County, and Charlotte County contracted with Neola. So I've been working with Neola now for seventeen years. First as an employee of a school district, and then in 2005, I retired. I became a consultant for Neola. We currently serve more than thirty school districts in Florida. I won't name them all, but I will tell you that just to the north, Charlotte County is a client. Just to the south, Collier is a client. Miami-Dade is a client. And we have the smallest school districts in Florida were also clients. Jefferson County and Franklin County and all kinds in between. No matter the size of the district, frequently, the issues are the same. So it's not a surprise that we have similar, very similar policies in all of our districts. We have three legal firms that vet our policies, that draft them for us, and then when we develop them locally in the state, they review them and vet them. The firm of Sniffin and Spellman and Terry Harmon in Tallahassee are our Florida firm. And we have two major law firms in Washington, D.C., who vet our policies regarding federal regulation and law and OCR case law. We are the only company that provides this service, who warrants that our policies are in compliance with federal and state law. The only one. And if your policy, if you're a client of ours and your policy is ever challenged, Neola will provide you with assistance to your board council in defending your policies. That's who we are. That's the company. And if I might ask for your indulgence, I will try to be brief. I will try to cover as much of this as I can. We have plenty of time. But if you could hold questions until I'm finished, I would most appreciate it because perhaps the questions that you have may be answered later in the presentation. And if they're not, we'll have time for you. The service that we provide involves a complete review of your entire policy manual and the revision of policies to bring them into compliance with federal and state law, Florida's DOE rules and regulations, and the changing case law as it relates to public education and student and parent rights, et cetera. After the adoption of policies, we assist in the development of procedures to implement the policies. No other company that we know of assists in the development of procedures to implement the policies. And we provide forms where forms are required to implement the policies. For example, field trips. We have a policy on field trips. Then we have a procedure about how you go about registering your son or daughter, your student, on a field trip. Where the field trips can go, what the rules are as far as chaperones are concerned. And then we have forms that are available for parents online to fill out so that they can sign up their student before the field trip. These forms and procedures are all, all have the same number as the policy. For example, the field trip policy, I can't remember exactly what the number is. I should have looked it up. But let's say it's 2151. That would be PO 2151. PO for policy. The procedure would be AP 2151. That's administrative procedure. The form would be F 2151. So when you're looking for them, they're all attached to the same policy that they're being asked to implement. The content of the policies and the procedures will be on servers maintained by Neola. They'll be available on a district website in a form that is user-friendly and word-searchable. We will provide you with consultation on an as-needed basis for the development of new procedures and policies and forms. And you'll get semi-annual updates and special updates as required to keep the policies current and in compliance with federal and state law. That's the service that we provide. You understand perhaps now who the company is and what service we provide. Now, the process by which we do this begins with the development of a schedule. The schedule is not determined by Neola. It's determined by you, by the superintendent and by the board. How quickly do you want to get this done? How much of a priority is this? The length of time for the project depends on the priority assigned to the project by the superintendent and board. The length of the project depends on the priority assigned by the superintendent and the board. The completion of the project within the agreed-upon guidelines depends upon the degree of preparation that the staff and the board dedicates to the project. I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute, but let me tell you that Miami-Dade took seven months from beginning to end to get their policies reviewed, revised, and adopted. The superintendent Seminole, when he heard that, said, well, and he's a very competitive person, he said, "Well, we can beat that." So they did. They did it in six months to develop a complete set of policies. And Little Glades County, right next door to you here, took six months to develop a complete set of policies, a complete set of procedures, and the forms. If you want to see what these policies and procedures and forms look like, Glades would be a good place. If you're interested to see what your counties to the north and south have done, I suggest that you look at the policies in Charlotte County and in Collier. I suggest that you look at the policies in Miami-Dade, a county that is as large as Lee is, not quite as large as Miami-Dade. I understand they now have five hundred thousand students in Miami-Dade. But this is a very big county. So if you want to see what a very big county's policy looks like, Neola client Miami-Dade would be a good place to look. Prior to the meetings with staff, oh, let me tell you that six months was the best. The longest that a district has worked with us was over two years to develop policies and procedures. And again, that was based upon the priority that the district, the superintendent, and board placed on developing the policies. Other things, we know, all of us who are Neola representatives know that you have competing priorities. And if you don't set a deadline, the project will just go on for as much as two years. So that's why we encourage.
Ms. Givenelli, are you on? Ms. Givenelli? I apologize. Could you just mute yourself? Thank you for being here, and could you just mute yourself? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young.
If you don't set a deadline, competing priorities will interrupt the process. So, again, not our deadline, not our timeline. We consultants and associates get paid by the hour, not by you, but by Neola. So if it takes a long time, we'll be here when you're ready. Prior to the meetings with staff, Neola staff will have reviewed your entire policy manual and provided your staff and the board with a crossover between your policies and our templates. And it'll be a two-way crossover. The first will be listing your policies in order, and then across from them will be the Neola templates which relate to your subject matter for your policy. The second crossover will be Neola's policies in order. Across from it will be your policies that relate to the policies that are described in the template. Ideally, and I say this advisedly, ideally, staff will review the crossover comparing the templates and current district policies before they meet with us. If they don't, and we have had this happen, the two-year board and staff that I'm talking about, frequently, the first times staff looked at our templates was when they met with us. So we read them together, our templates and their policies. That took an awful lot of time, time which they eventually ended up paying for because, as you'll hear later, when you exceed the number of contract hours, you pay a fee, you pay an hourly rate for it. We, I'm a consultant. The others in this group that work with me are associates. We recommend, we suggest, we advise. The process is collaborative. It is not a one-size-fits-all policy or procedure. Our generic templates are merely a place to start. We have nine policy books and one book of bylaws for the board. So there are ten sections to our templates. A comment about board bylaws, I don't know whether you have a book of board bylaws or not. Many districts do not. Many districts have procedures that are described from place to place, but there is no specific board bylaws. And the first workshop we conduct will be about board bylaws. And some of the items in the board bylaws involve board powers, member powers, standards for boardsmanship, standards for ethical conduct, conflict of interest, public expressions of members. These are just a few. And the last one, and perhaps most timely, 069.1, public participation at board meetings. There's a lot of interest in this one lately. And we have a number of options for you. They have been vetted as far as the First Amendment right to free speech is concerned. They are consistent with state policies regarding the conduct of board meetings. So we think you would find those interesting as other boards have. The templates comply with federal and state law and DOE rules and regulations. They are example, they're also policies that are examples of best practice in other Florida districts. Over the past fifteen, twenty years, we have learned in Neola a great deal about best practices in Florida, and we've incorporated them in our policies. These policies, templates, are not intended, I'll say this as I said it earlier, they're not intended to be automatically substituted from your district policies dealing with the same subject. Each school district in Florida is unique, and your policies ought to reflect your unique character. Together with your staff, we will review the staff's recommendations regarding each template. A determination will be made by your staff with our input as to whether to recommend retaining your current policy, adopting Neola's policy template, combining the two, taking a cut and paste from one and putting it in the other, or drafting an entirely new policy. Those are your options. Those are the options that staff has when they meet with us to discuss them. And those are the options that you will have to discuss when we bring these policy recommendations to you in a workshop. Your staff will be trained by Neola regarding the drafting process, and we utilize the Board Docs platform, which I understand you have utilized as well. So this will not be a mystery to you. The staff recommendations will be submitted to the board in a series of workshops facilitated by Neola during which the district staff and Neola representative, probably me, will explain the recommended policies and respond to questions for board meetings. The board's involvement and that of the board attorney varies from board to board. This particular board that I mentioned that took two years, they took four two-hour workshops to go over board bylaws. They did so because one member of the board insisted on reading every word of every template and then parsing them, looking for a better word to express this or that. And it took them eight hours, more than two workshops, to go through the bylaws. Other districts, the vast majority of other districts, go through the entire workshop process in four two-hour workshops. Some, three. One, two, and one only took two hours to do the whole thing. That was a situation where they'd had the same superintendent for twenty-five years, and they had the same board members for a number of terms, and they trusted each other. So when the superintendent's staff made a recommendation about policy templates, the board said, "Well, we've been working with you for twenty years. We believe you." Good, fine. And less than two hours, we adopt the entire policy manual. The board workshops are typically conducted by subject area in bite-sized chunks. We have, as I said, nine policy areas. Typically, we combine three of them, administrations, instructional staff, and support staff in the HR section. There are three separate sections because there are separate policies that deal with different kinds of leave, for example, for instructional staff and for support staff and for administrative staff, different hiring practices. But many of the policies in those three sections are identical. Non-discrimination, sexual harassment, whistleblower, those are all the same for all three. So even though there are three separate policy packages, they go pretty quickly. Then we have student section, we have the curriculum section, we have the properties, we have operations, those, and finance. Those are the sections which we combine, usually two or three sections at a time. And we don't bring these sections to you unless the staff has completed them in their entirety. So you will have an entire section to look at. You won't have to keep going back into different sections, back and forth. So after the board input at, oh, I should add here, these bite-sized chunks. This is a huge, this is a huge task. And when I discuss the size of this task, reviewing your entire policy manual, the question about how can you do such a huge task is answered by the analogy of how do you get enough, one bite at a time. So we do these bite-sized chunks. And what we do is we have these chunks, these sections, provided to the board two weeks in advance of the workshop. So you have ample opportunity to review them, to have questions in your mind, questions to be presented to us and to your staff as we meet. And one of the boards, the one that took two years, insisted on, one board member insisted on reading each policy recommendation in its entirety aloud at the workshop. With all the other districts that we work with, we approach the board with the following observation. Board members, you've received these policies. You've had an opportunity to review them. Do you have any questions concerning the first book of policies? And we address those questions. If you have no questions, we move on. I've been a board member. I was a board member in Leon County for a number of years, for one term, and chair for the last two. I understand that there are some board members who won't read any of the policies and some who will read every word. I don't know if it's that way in this school board, but I can tell you that in most of the school boards that I work with, there are some of each. The ones who have not read any have no questions. And the ones who have read them have questions. And the ones who have read them have questions as that relates to their particular interest. After the board input at the workshop, further revisions will be made consistent with the board's recommendations, recommendations for change. The district's new policy manual will utilize Neola's numbering system. So you're going to have to learn a whole new set of numbers if you decide to work with us. The reason for that is because we have 1,600 clients. All 1,600 clients have the same numbering system. So when there are updates, and there are semi-annual updates as part of the service, when there are updates, all we need to do is cite to the policy number which is being updated, and we provide them with a template of that policy and the new language which is required to bring you into compliance with federal and state law. We do the work for you. We couldn't do that if everybody had a different policy number. We'd have to go into each district and figure out where it fit. We don't have to do that here. When it's all done, the policies are, we recommend the policies are adopted as a whole. I think the reason for that is probably obvious, but if we adopted the piecemeal, we'd have collisions between your current policies and the newly adopted policies, or the policies that were newly adopted would not be consistent with policies that are later adopted perhaps as because of the changes that were made. So we strongly encourage, and every board and board attorney that we've worked with so far has agreed, that what happens at the end of this process is after the policies are advertised pursuant to the APO, after you advertise and have your first, what happens then is there's a motion to adopt the new policies and rescind the old ones. In one fell swoop, you have a new set of board policies. The same process is used for forms and procedures. We have templates for all of the policies that need procedures. And when forms are identified during the work with staff as being applicable to these particular policies, we make notes of those so that they can either give us copies of their forms that don't need changes, and we simply put the new number on them that attaches them to the policy that they're applied to, or we create new forms for them. That's totally up to them. Neola's continuing role, as I mentioned, we provide semi-annual policy updates. And I will tell you, this should not surprise you. The last legislative session was remarkable. As a result of that remarkable session where the legislature, my word, meddled in your business, told you how to educate children, there was a requirement as a result of that legislation to change 48 policies. Adopt changes to 48 policies as a result of these amazing laws. Forty-eight policies out of more than 400 that we have templates for. And by the way, I think it is safe to say of the years I've been doing this, we have never come with one exception. Never come to a school district with our full package, our full panoply of templates, and found that we did not have a template for one that they needed a policy for. Only one time did this happen. That was in Martin County where Martin County has parades as part of the school year, and they needed a policy on parades. Well, we didn't have one, now we do. But, so of these 400 policies, 400 plus, 48 needed to be changed. Ten percent of the policies needed to be changed as a result of one legislative session. Now, if this, if this had been required of your staff and your attorney, it would have taken an incredible amount of time and money, as time is money, to accomplish this. This is all we do. This is part of our service. These updates are part of our service. So we are comfortable coming to you and saying, as a result of these updates that we're providing for you, we will keep your policies up to date and current on the law. That brings me to the cost, and I almost finished. And I have not noticed any of you nodding off, and I appreciate that. I don't like virtual meetings, and I can't, I'm also an arbitrator, and to conduct an arbitration virtual, when you can't see the people and see body language and get signals from people about whether they're listening, whether they care, whether they're interested or not, this is a, well, I just don't like to do it, and I'm very pleased to be able to do this in person here. The cost, it's a sliding scale according to the number of students in the district. Unfortunately, you're in the largest category, so your cost is the highest of all. Your cost includes a predetermined number of hours of consultation based upon our experience with districts of similar size. The cost for this service for Lee County is $103,995. This cost may be spread over three years. The cost includes 400-plus policy templates that are warranted to be in compliance with federal and state law and federal and state regulations, 120 drafting hours with three Neola representatives, two of whom will be attorneys, and all be thoroughly familiar with Florida school law and public education. This is probably a fair time for you, well, I'll do it at the end. The number of Neola staff, three, will be working with you, these 120 hours, the number is the same whether there are one of us or three of us. There will be three. Three of us is still one hour, one hour of FaceTime. 120 hours with three Neola associates drafting, reviewing, revising policies. It also involves 200 processing hours. When these policies are being reviewed and revised and revised again and revised again, our staff in Stowe, Ohio, in Koshaton, Ohio, constantly provide updated versions of the policies under consideration. In addition, the first five semi-annual updates are included at no charge. And Neola provides a two- to four-hour consultation per update twice a year. Additional costs are assessed based upon expenses for travel and food and lodging. Fortunately for you, these costs will be minimal because I live right at the road in Port Charlotte. Frankie St. James works in Monroe County, but she has an RV and she travels in the One of our newest representatives, Mindy McNichols, is, was until last year, an assistant board attorney for Dade County. She lives in Dade County. She spent 15 years working with the Dade County, Miami-Dade County schools, and she was their policy coordinator. So she is extremely knowledgeable. She'll be working with me and with Frankie St. James. Frankie was the deputy superintendent in Monroe County after she was the principal, after she was the assistant principal, after she was the teacher. She knows where the rubber meets the road. She knows about how education is delivered. The attorneys don't necessarily know all that, so it's good for us to have a staff member who has lived public education. My wife is a teacher, was, and she still substitutes because she doesn't want to lose contact with youth and youthfulness. So I've had this, I've had this experienced one step removed. The amount of additional expenses is largely controlled by the district based upon the frequency and length of time required by the visits, for the visits of Neola associates. In other words, a well-prepared staff, shorter meetings, less expenses. I mentioned, I think, well, examples, if you might wonder about how many, how often the districts achieve this contractual obligation of hours in the appointed time, most do. And for example, Charlotte, Blaine, Zalachua, Sumter, Seminole, Miami-Dade, have all, those are just a few, have all completed this task within the number of hours that they contract them for. After the updates that are included in the initial fee, there is a flat fee of $3,200 per semi-annual update for as long as the district wishes to maintain its relationship with Neola. Special and emergency updates are provided at no additional cost. For example, we provided one in August on the parent bill of rights, another remarkable piece of research, which required changes in policy. That was a special update. Again, what we did was identified the policies that needed any change. Those policy numbers were provided, the template was provided with that policy number in mind with the changes required by law in the policy that was provided. So all the board and staff had to do was look at it, make sure it did not conflict with the way they were currently doing business, present it to the board, and the board would adopt it. There was no extra work involved. We did that work. Finally, the contract may be terminated at any time. I'm going into my big finishing. This will take another minute or so. Policy development is important. It requires a significant amount of time and energy. It is labor-intensive, and it should be so. Policies are important. When we are finished, you will have a set of policies and procedures that have been completely reviewed and revised by those who established them, those who have entered in with them. The policies will comply with the law and will be consistent with the way you do business. They will be easily accessible to you and to the public and staff which serve you. The best resources for information about our service and the resulting product are our current clients. I will mention to you that we are the preferred provider by FSBA for policy review and revision, and we encourage you to contact FSBA to ask about our service. And finally, the best source, and I mentioned it to you earlier, the best source of information about Neola is our clients. We encourage you to talk with board members and staff in Charlotte, in Collier, to your north and south, and anyone else that you know that might be interested, who you might be interested in talking to. If you want to see what our policies look like, check out the policies for Collier, Charlotte, Miami-Dade. If you want to see what a complete policy project looks like, take a look at Glades. We look forward to working with you and your staff if you decide that that's a good thing for you to do. Questions?
Okay. If I may, Ms. Giavennelli? Ms. Giavennelli, can you tell me if you can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So would, Mr. Young, whenever you're responding back, I know I had gotten a message that she was having some difficulties hearing, so I just want to make sure that everybody can hear.
Very good. Thank you. Questions?
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. You talked about the drafting process, and you mentioned there were three people, you and two attorneys. And you mentioned several times with staff, who in particular, I mean, I kind of want to know what that policy drafting looks like, and who in particular would be staff members that would be involved?
That's a great question. And I left it out because I didn't want to, I didn't want to get down too much into the weeds, but these are weeds that are worth getting into. What we do at the beginning of each project is ask the superintendent to meet with his or her staff and go through the list of policy templates, identify individuals who have specific responsibilities for the area involved in the template. For example, HR. Now, even in HR, you've got somebody in HR who deals with lead, you have somebody who's involved with hiring practices, you have somebody else. So you'd have a number of people in HR who would be involved and assigned specific policy templates to compare to your existing policies. Those individuals would work together to come up with a recommendation about, do we keep our current policy? How about Neola's template? Is that better than what we've got? Can we cut and paste and take some from ours and put it in Neola's, or do we need a whole new policy? They will come back up through their chain of command to the head of HR, for example, who would review their recommendations. And then if you have a further chain of command, you're going to work it through a deputy or assistant superintendent, you work up through that way. You'd have to have a point person. This is really important. And if we were to work with you, the first thing we would do would be to ask the superintendent to appoint a point person who would coordinate this entire effort. One person would know where all the policies are. There'd be a list of them, a spreadsheet, and everybody, every policy would have a name next to it, and the progress for those policies would be indicated. Where are they on it? How far has it worked back up through the chain? And then when they're ready, when they have a number of policies that have been vetted, reviewed by all those appropriate, that's when they meet with us. And it doesn't, we can meet with policy, with staff about finance, we can meet with staff about human resources, we can meet with staff about operations. But as we get closer to filling one of those policy books, then we emphasize focus on getting that done so we can bring to the board an entire section for your review. That's how that process works. And when we review, when we work with them in the final review before we come to the board, we question them. Why have you chosen to use this and not use that? And by the way, what you're proposing here is not in compliance with the law. So we'll tell you when this policy, we don't need that policy. Well, we'll tell you that the legislature in its infinite wisdom has told you sometime, you shall have a policy on this point, and it will say thus and so. I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do about that one. It's poorly written and not well thought out, but it's legislation. So we advise staff about when those situations occur. That's how the process works, along with the answer, but does that explain?
Pretty, pretty much. It's a little different.
Ms. Vaughn, I'm sorry. I keep getting these texts for us to stop for a second. Evidently, there are some problems with the mics, and production is making sure that the audience is hearing it as well. So, Miss Roman, are they coming out to fix it? Oh, here they are. They just want to make sure that...
Whose mic isn't working?
Mr. Young, maybe, is it?
Sounds like maybe it's this one, unfortunately.
Well, I have a big voice.
Just want to make sure that the taping everything... Should we take a break?
This one's definitely working.
Two-minute break?
Like, two minutes could work, yeah.
Okay. Three minutes.
There we go. It's perfect.
Three-minute break.
Yeah, you sounded perfect. We heard that. All right, thank you.
So, is this... Mr. Trejo?
It is now working. I think I hear myself.
You could say the Patriots are going to win tonight against Buffalo.
No, we're not saying that.
I could say that, and I hope that's true.
Ms. Vaughn, we're going to go ahead and, because we were, you were finishing up your-
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
We're going to, thank you, thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, well, thank you for your answer. I just wanted to clarify that really, the, none of this reaches the board until the packet of policies from a particular area are totally drafted.
That is correct, and that is consistent with state law, which provides that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the board will adopt policy. So what you're, what you're working with are the superintendent's recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
I think, Ms. Gittens, you had a question?
I did. Can you hear me okay?
Sure. There you go.
Thank you for coming. Good afternoon.
You're welcome, thank you.
Two questions. One, excuse me, I just got a little cold thing going, a tickle in my throat. When you talked about that you looked at our size and all the other criteria to come up with the price for us, so were you able to look at some of our policies as well?
No.
Okay, so you didn't do a-
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we don't know what condition our condition is in right now.
That is correct.
Okay.
That would, that would have required a considerable amount of work, which without a contract would not be economically appropriate.
Right. No, 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 I understand that. But it also says then, when you do start, if it, you know, if we decide to go ahead with it, that it could be substantially more time if you find that our policies are further apart from your templates than closer to your templates.
That's unlikely, based upon my experience with other districts, including districts of this size. The majority of work is done by staff comparing your current policies to our templates. When it gets to us, the staff has made some decisions and recommendations, and discusses those with us, and gives us a chance to ask them to consider a rationale for why the template was being used as opposed to the language in the current policy, or simply to say, yeah, your policy that you're proposing makes complete sense, it's consistent with the substance of our policy, we have no problem with it, and we move on. So there is not a lot of work and time consumed unless the staff is not prepared when they reach us. And remember, I mentioned, sometimes in some circumstances where staff has not been successful, where districts have not been successful in completing the task within the hours provided for in the contract, it's because staff was not prepared. And in one case, because the board took eight hours to deal with bylaws, which came out of their hours of total time on the contract.
Thank you. And the second part is, you mentioned the 103,000 over three years, and then on top of that, the 32, 3,200 per update?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, does that include, because every year, there's something that comes down from up above that we need to change. So the year that we had the 48, would that have been included in that 32?
Yes. It makes no difference how many. We provide you with semi-annual updates, and I have never seen one that did not include at least a dozen or more policies. Many of them involve federal regulations or DOE regulations, case law, as well as legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Giavennelli, do you have any questions? Can I go to Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for those answers. You actually answered several of my questions as you concluded your presentation and responded to my colleagues. So when we are looking at policies, are we first looking for compliance with state and federal regulations, where those are demanded by that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And so is it unusual then for you to, is it unusual then for you to add policies or eliminate some policies with the advice of staff?
Yes. It is not unusual. This happens frequently. And many, not many, a few of the 400-plus templates that we have, staff would find that they have no application in Lee County, and we would not use those, unless they are required by law, and if they were required by law, we would tell you so.
And would you repeat again then typically how much time we can expect our staff in the different departments to use while they're preparing, reviewing your policy templates and preparing to let you know what?
I did not mention a number, and that was intentional.
Okay.
I cannot estimate it. It depends totally on how, how staff accepts this responsibility. In small districts, it is relatively easy to determine the number of hours, because the only persons that we're talking to basically are the superintendent and the deputy. And they can answer all the questions, we just sit down face-to-face and we work through it. But when, I can tell you that in those circumstances, the amount of time spent by the superintendent and the deputy would be more, in my opinion, than the amount of time spent by individual staff members, because we have spread the work down to the level where the person who actually deals with the subject, the policy, is addressing it. And so there's not a, there's not a time where you have to get up to speed, so to speak. The person who deals with the policy is the one who reviews it and makes recommendations and works that back up the chain. So it is a time-consuming project. I will not diminish that. But because it is spread out in bite-sized chunks, it is not so time-consuming for individual staff members. The whole process will take staff a great deal of time, but hopefully, there will be a great many staff involved in it.
And then once that's completed, is the benefit that they will be free of that, you'll have, we'll have a uniform template for everything, and we'll be kind of up to speed then, once that initial responsibility?
Yes. The benefit of that, quite frankly, is that the persons who are being asked to implement the policy will have had a hand in reviewing and developing it, including the board.
That makes sense.
So, so often, in my experience, the people who are asked to implement the policy had no, no input whatsoever in developing it. It was shoved down their throats. And this process avoids that.
And that's good news. So you mentioned something about staff being prepared. What does it take for them to be prepared?
It takes a review of your current policy and comparison to our template on the subject matter involved, and then a recommendation as to whether or not we should keep your policy, we should accept instead Neola's policy, or we should modify the two in a cut-and-paste, bringing parts of your policy and parts of Neola's policy together, or in rare occasions, develop an entirely new policy, which we will assist in drafting.
So then, if we are, if we have some old policies that really aren't applicable anymore, the likelihood will be that the best thing to do would be to develop a new policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Or to, or to simply adopt Neola's template on that particular policy subject matter with appropriate changes to make sure that it's district-specific and accurately reflects the way you do business on that particular subject.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan, and Ms. Giavennelli, I got the message, I will come back to you. Well, Ms. Giavennelli, are you able to speak now?
I, I can't, I really don't have any questions. I've always felt we need to revise our policy, and Neola needed to be the one to sign. But now, since we're increasing our legal department, I would have to be one of the plans for the legal department, because I feel like that $100,000 can now be in a legal team. And I think legal teams should be, this could be something that a legal team can be doing. So that's my concern at this point. I think we have to discuss now what exactly is a legal department going to be doing. So, and that has nothing to do with Neola at this point, it just has to do with the board and the board's decision on how to move forward. So I appreciate the presentation by Neola, and I'm a supporter of Neola. I know the need is there for the policy to not align the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giavennelli.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes, you mentioned that if a policy, if our policy is challenged, that you will provide assistance to our attorney?
Yes.
Is that at no cost?
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of the warranty.
Okay.
We're the only company who does this kind of work that provides such a warranty.
Oh, Ms. Patrica?
I have three. Actually, what does assist legal if a policy is challenged entail? Helping legal, what does that look like?
Collaborating with your legal department, reviewing existing case law, and preparing a brief or argument to present to the court, assisting in that process. We've already done one of those in Brevard County, assisting them with their most recent challenge. The firm of Sniffen and Spelman in Tallahassee assisted them in preparing their case and presenting it.
Great, thank you. And then, Tom, I want to thank you first for being here today, for accommodating us by changing our vacation schedule, and wishing you safe travels when you leave here. I know you're dying to get out of here and start your vacation.
Well, thank you very much. It was, it's not, it's not a great imposition. It's on our way, and I'm pleased to have had the opportunity to be here and speak to you.
All right, I've got two more for you. Well, actually, this question I'd leave is for staff. When was the last time we had a comprehensive policy review in Lee County? Do we know? I think it was, I know it was before I joined the board, because there was, we've had a Neola discussion before, I don't remember exactly what year. We decided against it at that time because it was too time-consuming for staff. And what I would suggest to my colleagues is that this process is similar to having a baby. There's never a good time to do it, because it's, there's always going to be a reason not to, right? But at some point, you have to just do what's right and jump in with both feet, and I think that that's kind of the point where we are at this point. The fact that nobody sitting at this table can remember the last time we had a comprehensive policy review is concerning to me.
It was when we first came, right?
Yeah. No, we didn't have a-
Well, no, we spoke about it when we first got here.
We were still doing, we had a three-year renewal process, and it basically stopped in 18.
Okay. I just remember having a conversation regarding this when we got here.
And I don't remember policies coming to me on a regular basis for review and update. You said three-year process. It was always supposed to be a three-year process, but I've not engaged in that in my time on the board. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, and you can see that when you look at some of our policies, they haven't been updated since '14, '15, '16. At one point, we had a staff member who was assisting legal in doing that, but I don't think they ever really completed the entire, it's a huge undertaking.
Yes, it's a huge project.
And it sounds like you guys have the template or the mechanism to do that in a, in a much more organized fashion, and have the information that you use statewide to make sure that we are compliant with state and federal.
We've, we've seen some districts where the date on the bottom of the policy indicating when it was adopted. The oldest one was 1972. This is not uncommon. Three or four years is, given what happened in the last six months, 48 policies, three or four years is a long time. But when you go back to the previous century and you haven't looked at your policies, then there's a problem.
Ms. Patrica, you said you had one more question?
Yeah, so I would be in favor of doing this. My, as you discuss various issues you've had with different districts, I have zero concerns about staff. I know that if we ask staff to engage in this work, they will come to the table prepared. And I'm not in any way, shape, or form implying that anyone on this board would not be prepared, but we do know that our meetings tend to run long. So I would just, we would just have to commit to the time restraints associated with what we would be paying for with Neola in order to get through, in order to get through this process without incurring additional expense. Those are my comments for now, thank you. Oh, and my last question is probably for Attorney DePree Bruno. What are our next steps here? How do we go about, you know, moving forward? Should that be the board's direction to you?
It would be, you know, depending on what the board would like to do and provide some guidance and directions, and it will come back to the board. A contract will be drafted, and if the board approves, then we'll move forward that way. I do, I do have a couple of questions, if I may, Madam Chair. So I have a couple of questions. The first question is, once the law has been changed, how quickly are we notified or is the policy updated?
If, if there is a, an effective date which precedes the normal date for the release of the update, you will get an emergency update or a special update, as happened with the parent bill of rights in this past legislative session. Typically, the update comes out in August, and another comes out in February. The August update is intended to capture the changes made by the legislature in that past legislative session, and then the one in February is intended to capture changes which have occurred at the federal level or changes that we've missed in the, in the previous update. And also, it typically involves the memorialization of best practices which we have observed in other districts, in other district policies.
So sometimes the administrative code, the changes are in August.
Yes.
So what happens with that? Will we get something prior to February if there's a change?
Yes.
Okay.
And if it's at all possible. And our experience so far has been, and I cannot speak for this government- And our experience so far has been, and I, I cannot speak for this governor or this legislature and would not attempt to, but previous legislatures and governors have given districts a little leeway in the implementation of changes in legislation by the effective date. But where there is a, an effective date that precedes the issuance of the update, it is our practice to attempt to get that to the districts beforehand in the form of a special or emergency update.
So when we get these updates, are we provided with the statutory changes?
Yes.
Are we provided with the case law that's applicable?
Yes.
That we know?
Yes.
Okay. And when you are looking and doing the updates, you're looking at the new legislative changes, you're looking at the administrative code changes?
Yes.
And all of the regulations that are applicable?
Yes.
Including federal case law, federal statutes, regula, regular, reg, regulations and all of those good things? Because there's a lot of different areas and bodies of law that are implicated.
Yes, yes, there are, and that is, that would be a huge task for an attorney's office or a staff member to do, but this is all we do, and we have law firms who do that for us. And that's part of the fee.
The, you indicated that there are reviews or you provide current and updated forms?
Yes.
So will you be looking at the district's current forms to see how it's in compliance with our policy? How does the form and the, and the process documents work?
Most often, what happens is that the district has a form which, which, which works, which satisfies their needs, and all we do is slap our number on that form. When we, when they don't have a form, or when their form is not adequate, they can look at our form template and see if it provides them with some answer to the problem that is presented by their current form. But the, that form process is relatively simple and not time-consuming at all. And procedures, by the way, are also much less time-consuming than policies, because the procedures don't have to come to the board, they're the superintendent's procedures to implement the board's policies.
And will, will you also look at the current procedures that the district has in comparison to your template?
That would be the same process we use for the policies. The, the staff would be looking at the procedures that they currently have, and most, many do not have any procedures that are word-searchable. They're, they're in the forms of memoranda, they're in the forms of local knowledge of, you know, they, they don't have a procedures manual for their, for their policies. We provide a, a series of templates for them to look at for each policy which requires a procedure, and they can look and see, do we have a procedure on this? If we do, is it better than what you've provided? If we don't, then let's start with the one you've given, make it district-specific, and, and adopt it. And the thing about procedures, again, is because it does not require board action, if it doesn't work today, you can change it tomorrow.
And is there a database for that? Because I know that in terms of the policies, you have a pretty nice database, you know, your chapters and your numbers and your bylaws. Do you have something similar for the forms and the procedure processes?
The, the procedures, the same database would be applied to the procedures as is applied to the policies. It's the same, it's the same basis for the procedures as it is for the policies. And if the policies and the procedures are in compliance with federal and state law, then the form to implement them will be as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Savage, or is there anyone else who has any? Okay. I'm going to go. Can I take them first? On the Miss Vaughn and the Miss Gittens?
No, I, I was just, you were asking, it was more about the procedural side, specifically about supplemental process documents, resources, the opportunity to collaborate across networks of other implementers who have the aligned policy framework. You answered that question via Attorney Dupree Bruno, so I was just pointing there looked like a couple more questions.
Thank you. Miss Vaughn?
Okay. I, I wanted to go back for just a minute to the drafting portion and keeping sunshine, Florida sunshine law in, in mind, two things. First of all, that would preclude individual board members getting with staff that is drafting, that is working on the drafting? Am I, would I be, and maybe this is for, for legal, but it would seem to me that one individual going to staff members that are working, that would be a problem.
I, I would defer to your, to your attorney on that, but I would, I would observe, I'm, I'm also an attorney, not a school board attorney, but an attorney, don't hold that against me. But I, I don't think one individual going to a staff member to talk about a, a policy would be a violation of the sunshine. Two.
Yeah, that's.
That would be a problem. And if one of them went and, and, and the staff member used them back and forth, I think that'd be a problem, but, but I don't.
I think, yeah, that would be my worry. And, and actually, the second part of that is, once, let's say we have a contract with you, would that also preclude individual board members calling to ask questions? To say, hey, at our board meeting, such and such occurred, I don't agree with that? I, I see that happening.
I think, Ms. Vaughn, that would be within the scope of work, because based on what I'm hearing, in terms of the process, it would be going through staff and then going through the different levels, and then, once there is a good draft of the policy, to then bring it to the board for the board's consideration as a whole, so.
But I'm talking about once it's, it's, it's done. For instance, with our board, board auditors, when we had, when we had auditors, people could call, and individuals could call and ask questions. I'm assuming that any phone call would be part of the hours that we get in our service plan, and so that if individuals call to ask questions, how, how does that work?
I, I can tell you that in the fifteen years that I have been doing this, I have never once, I am not aware of one instance where a board member has called us during the process before the workshop. Now, if you're talking about.
I'm talking about after with the contract off. Two things I was talking about, yeah.
After the workshop, we, we are more than happy to respond to questions from the board or from the attorney or from the superintendent, and those would not be charged on an hourly basis.
So if individuals called, it would not be additional?
It would not.
Cost? Okay. And one final quick note, you said that the contract, should we go with your company, be terminated at any time?
At any time.
Now, right, by, by, by us.
Yes.
All right. So you keep those, these have to be, the templates are copyright, are they not?
That's correct.
So what happens if we decide after a couple of years, no, we don't really need this, it's not cost-effective? Is it like overnight, whoosh, no policies? Where, where do those policies go?
Those policies remain in your policy manual. What you would lose would be the updates.
Right, but, and what about the platform? Because they're on your digital.
Board docs platform.
I thought, oh, okay.
They're on the board docs platform, and, and.
Oh, okay. Well, that's basically like what we have.
Would remain. They would remain.
Okay, so that, yeah, so they wouldn't just, I understand the other services.
They would not go up into the ether.
But they would not be like, whoosh, they're gone, too bad.
They would not.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Eight seconds left.
Hmm?
I said you made it with eight seconds left.
Ms. Jordan?
Miss Gittens? Okay.
Oh, Miss Gittens, and then I just wanted to clarify something.
Yes, my question, Ms. Patrica mentioned that when you had talked about staff and, that, you know, and we, there would be no problem with staff, and I agree with that, that there's no problem with staff having the ability. My concern would be staff having the time.
Sure.
You know, everybody is kind of flat out right now because of everything that's going on. So, and you did say a dedicated member, so in other words, if you went into HR to start, there would have to be a dedicated person in HR that would work with the three of you to make sure this gets done?
Yes.
So, yeah, I, I mean, I'm not sure how that would work, because.
Let me, let me reassure you, perhaps. If, if you determine, if the superintendent and his or her staff determines that they can't get this work done in the time that they had originally anticipated it, then postpone the meeting with us. Our clock doesn't start to run until we meet with you. So don't meet with us unless you're ready. If you're not ready, don't meet. If the staff needs to postpone it because, and again, all of us, at different times, were administrative staff for a district, and we understand competing priorities, we understand emergencies, we understand unanticipated events which take your time away from something that had a deadline. If that happens, let us know. We won't meet. We'll, we'll, we'll meet when you're ready. The, the calendar is yours, not ours.
And, and I understand that, I just, and, and maybe someone can explain it to me later, but I, I believe from what I hear and see that pretty much staff is flat out just trying to, you know, keep needing an alligators right now. So to select someone and say, on top of all that you are doing, we need you to focus on this. So it leads to my next point, though. Ms. Giavennelli did mention about the, the legal department restructuring, and perhaps that would be the place to have someone be a, a, a point person or whatever, to not put as much on a staff member at this point in time. And that's, that's a discussion for us, but I didn't want to bring, bring that up.
That's a fair point, and, and what I, what I didn't mention is that the involvement of the board's attorney or the in-house attorney varies from board to board. Some are involved in the writing process, the drafting process, the review process. Some of them don't get involved until the workshop.
Okay.
So it's really up to the, the board, the superintendent, and the attorney's office as to the depth of involvement of the attorney, but that's, that's a fair point.
And my last question is, do you have a service that just updates a district's policies to make sure that they are all in compliance? In other words, like, a, a Plan A would be to get the whole kit and caboodle, and a Plan B that you would come in and, and update our policies?
No.
Okay. Fine, thank you. That was great.
Mr. Dupree Bruno, I know we're a little over.
Just really quick, I know that this is something that the board has been wanting to do to get our policies up on board docs, and so little by little, they've been trying to do that. But my understanding from Neola, it's already the platform, it's already on board docs.
That's correct.
That's all I was clarifying.
And by the way, we will have an IT person training staff to show them exactly how to review, revise, and, and put the policies in the proper form so they can be discussed with us and be further revised. That whole, that whole process will be, their training is available, and, and if, if a staff member gets stuck on where to put this in the, in the board book, a phone call to our IT person, RT staff, will, will result in a callback that day or the next day at the latest to assist them in the actual process. And this is very helpful for me, because I am a technological dinosaur, I'm not comfortable with technology at all, and when I have a question, I call Ken, and Ken leads me and makes it dummy-proof in his explanation, so we can deal with staff that's not experienced or comfortable with this, we do it all the time.
Patrica? Dr. Savage, if you could, in the board update, either this week or next, get with staff and provide us with your recommendation with regard to timing and whether you and your staff find any usefulness with regard to this service, I would really appreciate it.
Well, I'm happy to provide just right now, I think one of the, you know, for us as an organization, and you as a governing body, it's always in your mind wondering, okay, so we have these policies, are they actually being implemented? I think what is unique about the proposal that's in front of us is it's attempting to standardize so that there is a defensible approach, not just here in the state of Florida, but really all across the country, benefiting from the collective wisdom of folks at the policy level, providing that continuity of the best minds from a, from a policy standpoint. But the additional value add from an operational perspective is to have access to additional supplemental procedures, which is really how a policy becomes alive. And so while it's true, maybe the legal team could take some of the, that's worthy of board discussion, the reality is that the policies, they are being enacted and living in our, in our district, so it's impossible to circumvent, the actual people have to implement what we say we have to do. I think a district of our size, one of the things that always concerns me is just the level of variance across school to school.
Mm-hmm.
And across the many departments that we have. And so something along this line that attempts to consolidate that around great thinking, and then the access to the great policies and procedures, while it is a, a long effort, it would be, even without Neola, it would be something that I would want us to continue to do, because I think it's, it's quality control. It's, it's, it's a necessary part of leadership. So I'm very supportive of this type of effort. It's, it's up to you whether you find that this client, you know, this Neola is the right partner, but I think in terms of that work, I don't think there's much better I could offer you as a superintendent to say that we should always be in the business of ensuring the quality implementation of our policies across our district.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, with that, Miss Gittens, were you raising your hand?
I just had one statement. I, I believe that directing the superintendent to do that should be a decision that is made by the board as to whether we want him to move forward and come back to us with the idea that this is something feasible that staff could do et cetera.
Well, I, I think that he just actually made that statement without having to come back to us how he felt about this whole process. And then, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mrs. Gittens that we should have some, some specifics. For instance, Mrs. Giavennelli brought up the fact of the hundred and three thousand, hundred and, almost hundred and four thousand, and the additions to our legal department. Time is money, and when we ask our staff to do certain things, I, I think we need to look at, look at a cost analysis on this, to, you know, come up with a ballpark number of hours that it might take somebody on staff, and I know we have per-hour rates for staff because we charge it for the PRR records, and so I, I would like, before we move on this, I, I would like to see, A, what kinds of things will, you know, a little bit more about our expansion of the legal department, and B, getting that cost analysis on exactly how much will it cost us to have our staff involved with this? So I, I would propose, I know we're not, we can't vote, but I would propose more specific ask if the rest of my board colleagues feel that that's appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. And then also, we've heard Mr. Young is here to do a presentation for us, to give us knowledge of what they offer. At, at this point in time, we are not voting on anything, it's just for information purposes, and as it seems right now, there is more conversations to be had regarding this with the costs, as you just mentioned, staff time, legal department, so there's a lot more that we as a board need to discuss.
Well, and I think, Ms. Gittens and I brought it up, because it appeared to me that Mrs. Patrica was giving a direction to the superintendent, and I feel like that needs to come from us as a whole.
Ms. Patrica was asking the superintendent for, yes.
That's not how I heard it, so.
She was asking the superintendent, and then the superintendent went ahead and responded to all of us at this moment, so there will be nothing sent to Ms. Patrica or anyone. He went ahead and answered that, I don't want to be speaking for you, but I believe that's what you just did.
Exactly.
So moving forward.
I got the information I needed in that answer, just so you all know.
Okay. So let's, I'm just, let's bring it back. So we will, Mr. Young, I, we thank you so very much for being here, we appreciate the, the conversation and the information that you have, and of course, now we will have further discussion. And of course, now we will have further discussion upon this.
I appreciate the board's interest and the board's questions. And again, I appreciate the opportunity for being able to come and speak to you on my weight of the red coconut.
There you go. We'll enjoy our city. Thank you so much. And with that, we're going to take about a two-minute break so we can allow Mr. Young to leave and bring our next speakers out. Okay, thank you. We are reconvening this meeting. Hello, everyone. We appreciate you being over there. Mr. Bradley? Hello? Okay, our next thing on the agenda is the agenda review, and that is Dr. Savage.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members. We're here for the agenda review. First item, and we'll go ahead and get right into it. First item is from the consent agenda H, Academic Services. This is the approval to amend the 2020-2022 School Health Services Plan. The question is, does this solidify the answer to comments made by parents regarding medical services for children without parental consent? We have our Assistant Director of Health Services, Wally Cologne. Actually, first, we have Ms. Duncan. Is it Ms. Duncan?
I just wanted to introduce Wally. She came on as our Assistant Director of Health Services, so we're very pleased to have her, and I will let her work with Chuck Bradley to address this question.
Welcome.
Hello, good afternoon.
All right, so, I'm going to jump in and speak as well because Wally is, and we do call her Wally, Wally is new to her role, and so, I just want to jump in because we've been working on that Department of Health agreement, and the amendment brings it into compliance, especially with the Parents' Rights Bill, and makes sure that the agreement and our policies are in order to ensure that parents' rights are being afforded in their healthcare choices for their students and their children.
Thank you. And this was a question that was Ms. Gittens. So, Ms. Gittens?
It's okay. Oh, at the last, I'm sorry. I think it was at the last meeting or one of our meetings, there was a parent that made a comment about the students receiving vaccinations and stuff, and I think the superintendent addressed it and said that, no, they would not, that would not happen unless there was parental, do you remember what I'm saying?
Correct.
That is correct.
So, is that definitively covered in this document?
So, no student would receive a medical procedure without a doctor's order, and that would only be by physician's order and parent consent. We do not provide any medical procedures for students without that doctor's order and parent consent.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Gittens?
Yes. Thank you.
Dr. Savage, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Prey Bruno?
And just to add to that, Ms. Gittens as well, and for the public to know, right now, there's a law that prevents any type of mandatory vaccinations regarding COVID-19.
It's hard to hear you. Is everyone here?
So, I was just saying that through the special session, there is a law now that prevents any type of mandatory vaccinations.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair, from the I section of the agenda, the consent under Business Services, item I-1, Approval of the 12-Month Employee Calendar for School Year 22-23. The question is, mention that the non-FSA testing in December does not affect the calendar. Our response today is from Dr. Desmore.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Desmore, excuse me. Ms. Giavanelle, I am not trying to forget you, so if I do by accident, please remind me that you are up there or there with us.
That's fine, thank you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Dr. Savage, members of the board. I wasn't sure if I really understood what the question or comment was, but I'd be happy to speak to it if you would just clarify what it is, that information that you were looking for, wanted us to speak to.
And basically, it was, I think it was last week when Academic Services announced about doing testing prior to the December break, and there was some concern, especially from the union, that there had been changes in the calendar that had not been approached.
Oh, okay, so I understand, so.
What I understand is that that testing, quote-unquote, is basically diagnostic, and it is not FSA-type testing. I just wanted to make sure of that.
I'll let Dr. Spiro speak to that. This calendar that we're talking about here is the approval of next year's work calendar for 12-month employees. The concern that I know that the union brought up related to those testing dates was for now, for this year. This calendar is related to next year. But I'm just going to look back at Dr. Spiro real quick, and he'll address your question related to the actual testing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Desmore. So, the final exam schedule that you're referring to for the upcoming year, that primarily impacts our semester-long courses. Those are, that's their final exam. Others are normally very diagnostic in nature, as you talked about, for the year-long course.
Okay, so it's the end-of-course testing?
Yes, ma'am.
That would have happened anyway.
That would have, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair, item I-5, the approval to piggyback the Prince William County Public Schools contract for the online marketplace for purchase of products through Amazon Services. There were three questions for this particular item. First, please explain how this works with schools. Can they order direct from Amazon with this contract? Question two, is this like a $1 million open PO with Amazon? Explain how this will work, the accountability aspect of this. Have you ever had an open-ended million-dollar contract before? And last, just Amazon Services, just getting clarification. So, the person who's here to speak to this is Susan Malley, Executive Director.
And I just want, before you start speaking, I just want clarification from Ms. Giavanelle as well as Ms. Gittens and Ms. Morgan. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I was basically just asking, I recall us having a conversation about purchasing through Amazon and storing it somewhere and all that stuff you talked about. And I just wondered how this affects, you know, that particular thing. I know we had talked, you had talked about not having places to store stuff and all of that. So, can you kind of bring us up to date on this and how it fits with that previous conversation?
Absolutely.
You can take all those three questions.
All together. Okay. So, the question is about this piggyback contract that allows locations to order through Amazon. So, what this does, it's not a blanket purchase order agreement with Amazon. It allows every location to place orders and process requisitions as they do through the regular purchasing process. So, the administrator in charge of the location would approve the requisition, and then the procurement team would review the requisition, and it would be processed like that. Amazon is like a store, right? So, or a vendor, so just like we would need to create a purchase order with our other vendors, we have this purchase order with Amazon for that purpose. Let's see, any other?
Ms. Giavanelle, I know that you had a question there regarding the open PO, and I know we did have this conversation prior, so do you have anything else that you have questions regarding?
No, she answered it, thank you.
And Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, my question is a more general one about contracting with Amazon and, you know, how we arrived at a contract with Amazon as opposed to someone else. I mean, I just, I, I'm having difficulty believing that Amazon is truly competitive with respect to their products, and I think, I just want to know how we ended up with Amazon as opposed to...
Sure. So, the one thing I will say is our bookkeepers are frugal, so they're always looking for the best buy. I guarantee you, they're tighter with spending the district's money than they are with their ends sometimes. So, we have multiple options for schools to make purchases, including a bid tool where they can look up what vendors are on bid, and we also have a tool called Marketplace where bookkeepers can go and browse for a product, so let's see, there's a particular notebook they want for the students. They can go into Marketplace, put in the item, and a bunch of vendors, prices and options will come and respond what those prices are. Then, in addition, they can compare that on Amazon. So, there, this is really the ability to find competitive pricing for smaller items that you're not going to have a bid just for those, but significantly classroom supplies and office supplies.
Okay, sorry, I was just under the impression that their only option would be Amazon, so that explains it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Savage? Thank you, Ms. Malley.
Yes, Madam Chair, item I-8, the approval of expenditure for the purchase of instructional materials, professional development, testing materials, information technology, and textbooks. There are two questions. First, do we have a curriculum advisory input on this item? And two, how much of the budgeted $2.2 million is dedicated to gifted education? And again, our response is from Ms. Malley.
All right, so absolutely, our curriculum advisory group has input on the adoption process. This is the mechanism to purchase the things that the curriculum advisory team has indicated would be those products that would be using. I don't have an answer to the question at this time on how much is for gifted education, and I did take a look to see if there was a way that we could capture that, and I could work with Dr. Spiro to see if there is a way to capture the materials costs for gifted ed, but it's not something that we have readily available.
And I'm going to have Ms. Vaughn, because I know you had a question.
Yeah, that was mine. Yeah, and I'll be honest, I suspected that that figure would not be available because typically, the gifted end gets kind of short-changed on some of these things. And I know we have, especially in, not all the elementary schools, but we do have gifted programs, and, you know, gifted is part of the ESE. And so, to me, ESE should, and I know it'll be a small amount, but I would like to see what, if anything, is designated to that particular program, because I really do feel like, and this is anecdotally, that the program does not get its fair share from that budget, and so, I would like to see it in black and white, in numbers. So, if you could get, help me out with that number.
Sure, I'll work with Dr. Spiro to come back with that information.
Okay, and again, so is that something that, I definitely would be interested in that as well, thank you for bringing that up. Ms. Vaughn, is everyone else in agreement of getting those numbers so we can at least look at that? Ms. Gittens, you said, yes?
If it takes staff less than an hour and a half, we don't need board approval. So, if it's going to take staff less than an hour and a half to get that information, then the superintendent can simply provide the information. We don't need to go around the table every time.
I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with that, so we're all in agreement before they run out and do whatever. Thank you for that. And then, Ms. Gittens, did you, you had a question, which, she answered the question?
She answered. Okay, yeah, that's fine. But, I mean, I do want to say, maybe we need to figure out as a governance team what a directive is, you know, and we can't say how much time it takes, and one person can say, "Do this," or if it takes an hour and 45 minutes, then we need everybody's consensus. I just think it's simple and simplistic that as a governance team, that if there's something that comes up, we can easily just do a consensus and say, "Yes, that would be something we want to see," so.
And normally, before we get back to our desk or back behind these walls, they already have their answers to us. So, I really appreciate the staff and how quickly they always try to respond to everything. Ms. Fisher, did you have something? Because I know that some of your questions, did you have a question regarding this particular one?
No.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Malley. Dr. Savage?
Madam Chair, next item is I-10, it's the approval of the budget amendment dated October 31, 2021 to amend the 21-22 annual school budget. There are three questions here. First is, where does this reflect not moving forward on Quadruple A? Second is, the materials and supplies in the instructional services function has also changed due to funds needed for outside investigations, contracted security guards, due to increased new contract with Diamond Security, coach mentor superintendent leadership team in positions at Riverdale High School, funded from the Cape Academy's categorical in the community services function, capital outlay decreased due to movement of profits to other areas within the school's budget. Please advise the changes, why, explain, please. And then, last was budget amendment for, that is the question. And we have Dr. Desmore.
Yes, good afternoon again, members of the board, Dr. Savage. So, the first question related to where does this reflect not moving forward with Quadruple A, it doesn't. This budget amendment is dated October 31, 2021. The decision not to move forward with Quadruple A didn't happen until after that, and so, this does not reflect anything related to that.
So, may I just, so then, the November update will reflect to that?
Possibly not, because until we know that everything has been finalized, all, you know, expenses related to, then we wouldn't necessarily close it out until we know that that's done. So, remember, there was the issue of getting...
that's done. So, remember, there was the issue of getting the information on the steel and all of that. So, it will be most likely in December. I don't know that it would, you would see it reflected in November.
And my, my main question with that is, simplistically, if you have a budget of your family, and somebody calls one day and says, we're going to pay off your mortgage, and that's $1,200, $1,500 a month that you don't have to spend, you would, I think, sit down and say, okay, so what are we going to do with this windfall of $1,200? And it would mean looking at your budget and deciding, what else are we going to do? Are we going to, you know, remodel the bathroom like we wanted to do, because now we have the money? Just, that, that's what I'm just wondering. Where are we, since that decision was made? Are we regrouping and looking at that five-year plan and 10-year plan and saying, now what do we do?
Yes, but there'll, there'll be two different issues here. Simplistically, inside of the budget itself, to where you would see changes within the budget amendments that you see every month, the whole amount for the particular school wasn't even budgeted yet in the actual budget itself, because we don't put that out there until there's an approval of phase one, and then an approval of phase two. If there was an approval of phase two, then that money would have been out in the budget. So, all you're going to see as far as the adjustment to the budget and your budget amendments would be any outstanding or leftover amount from phase one, and that's it. As far as the other question that you were asking about, okay, well, now this whole project has been canceled, which frees up how, whatever the millions of dollars were in the five-year capital plan, that we need to determine what else we do with. You will not see that reflected on the budget amendment itself. It's just within the capital plan. And as we, you know, make our adjustments, find out all of the projects that are going on, and that we have upcoming planning, what the potential impact of project amounts or projected amounts of those projects would be, we have to account for those. And then, determine of anything that we may have left, what are our most highest priority projects that we want to slide in. And that's the process that we're going through right now.
And, and just to be brutally honest about it, what is being asked and what people are looking for is, if we are not doing this project, that gives us the time and the resources to potentially do other projects. And what they are asking is, what are we looking at those projects being? And for example, you know that there are definite needs in, throughout the district. So, if we were doing this project, and it was taking time and resources, and now we're not doing it, can we reprioritize and fix something that has been needed to be fixed and done previously?
Point of order, Madam Chair. I think we're off topic. We're talking about the budget. I'm not talking about...
No, ma'am, I'm talking about the budget. I'm talking about when are you going to reallocate budget of funding that was already, that was allocated? That's what I'm asking.
Well, I can, I can, did you want me to proceed with responding?
Well, as long as it's pertaining to the, the dollars.
Yeah. Well, I guess the answer to that is, we're working to rework what we have, you know, in the capital plan now. We're looking to get additional information on the projects that we already had on the slate, which were numerous, and numerous schools amounting to hundreds of millions of dollars. And so, we have to make sure that we account for any anticipated price increase of those. And then analyzing the projects, maintenance-type projects, technology-type projects that are on the, you know, on the slate to be done, and maybe didn't make the list this year, to determine how we would potentially use that. And because the decision was made just two weeks ago about the school, about moving on or not moving on, it takes time to, you know, come with those new decisions or new recommendations. And that's what, as a capital committee, we're working on now.
And I, the last thing I will say about it is, I have asked for, I can't tell you how long, about how much of the project with quadruple A was going to be capital, and how much was going to be half-sent tax. And I found out at that workshop that it was a tax-funded project, based on what two of my colleagues said. So, we need to discuss this, because...
Ms. Gittens, but right now, though?
I understand that. I'm just saying, this was about budget, and I wanted to get that out. Okay.
The amended budget is what we're speaking on right now.
Okay.
We can have that conversation at another time.
That's all right. I'm done. Thank you.
Should we add it to the parking lot?
It'll never get answered. That's okay. I'll bring it up at another time.
Ms. Morgan, you had a question regarding this for Dr. Desmore?
Yeah, so, and actually, in reading Ms. Giavennelli's comment, she may, she may be answering the question that I'm asking. I'm looking at instructional services, and there's a change in, reduction in salaries of a million one, and an increase in purchased services of a million two. And I'm just wondering, in a month's period of time, that's a pretty, to me, that's a significant swing. But, then Ms. Giavennelli has all these comments about all these services and things that are, that are part of it. I don't know where she got that information.
So, I didn't answer that question. So, let me go on to that one and answer that one then. So, for any changes to the budget, all locations across the district make these changes depending on what they need to purchase and when they need to do so. So, changes to the budget are made by individuals at various locations every day for their individualized purchasing needs. So, it seemed like, if I understood correctly, she was asking about positions at Riverdale High School funded from the Cape Academies categorical, or in community service function, that capital outlay decreased due to the movement of profits to other areas within the school's budget. Yes, all that is true, because when we set up the original budget for schools in their fee-supported, she was talking about the community services function, which really is a school's fee-supported program. Any profits they have in the fee-supported program, we're going to set it up in a particular function and object, which is that capital outlay that she referenced. When a school wants to use some of their profit to do something, whatever they decide to do, they're going to move that from that particular function and object to something else. And that is what you see, like the conglomeration of the consolidation, the adding up and the summation of all of these different budget changes that are happening throughout the district every day into what's happened over the month's time progress.
So, you're saying this is not unusual?
Well, no, but if you're asking, I want to go to the agenda item. If you're asking about something specific, would you point me to where you're asking? And then...
But I'm just, I'm looking, and I apologize, I didn't pull up the whole budget. But, I'm looking at instructional services salaries. So, it's under budget, item 5,100, salaries. And I'm looking at purchased services, 300, the category 300. I don't know how you identify these various...
Mm-hmm. I see, under salaries where that was a $1.1 million reduction I'm looking at?
Yeah. And then, an increase of purchased services is a million two. So, is that effectively because we've done these new contracts? Is, I mean, I don't understand, okay, I don't know if there's a relationship between what you just explained and my question, or my question is totally different from what you did.
Um, there, you know, there could be a relationship between, between the two. What I was describing was the process, which is where kind of you get the numbers, that you see the, the various reductions in addition. The specific one that you're talking about, though, with that reduction of the $1.1 million in that specific function and object, goes across, you know, a lot of, it could cut across a lot of different categories, because that function, instructional services, the largest function we have in the district. So, I could, I'd have to drill in to see what the specific thing was, or specific things were that happened, to answer your question. I certainly could do that.
But I'm not sure you need to. It's just that I don't always look at these with a laser focus. I happen to look at it this time. I guess my question is, is this normal? If it's normal, there's no need to, to do a deep dive. If it's unusual, I'm curious about, you know, the numbers.
Yeah, it is. It, it is normal, you know, for the various activities and actions that happen during each month. But, no problem in terms of getting the appropriate detail and then just kind of reporting on, on what it was, because it might have been one or two big things that make, you know, that made those amounts up.
Thank you.
Ms. Giavennelli, are you able to speak now?
She answered, she answered my question.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Desmore.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, did you have anything?
No, not right now.
Next up is J. 1. It's in the Human Resources section of the consented item, approval of personnel recommendations general. There are two questions at this particular item. Can the board please be provided with a regularly updated report of instructional vacancies by school in an Excel format so that we can manipulate? I would like to see the schools, the length of time the position has been open. I am majorly concerned with the vacancies, especially in the East Zone. A second question is, how long has this position been vacant? Are you filling from within? If so, please explain why this position was not filled sooner. How many applicants applied for this position? Can you please provide the resumes of all applicants? And we have Mr. Dode, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The first question is, yes, we can attempt to provide such a document. Staff, before I even got over here, I asked them to try to see if they could compile the data in that fashion, and we are going to work on it. I would ask for your deference till after the first of the year to provide such a thing. But, we are going to endeavor to do that for you. Second question, I believe, is regarding the Director of Internal Audit. That position became vacant on February 27 of this year, and the position is being filled by the current Director of Finance. He is transferring laterally. The committee that I was a part of interviewed four candidates for that position. I think there was five, but one dropped out, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. And we can certainly provide the resumes for that position.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I, I was not trying to ask for, you know, a lot of work. The reason I said manip, I can't even say the word with that, manipulated.
Yeah.
That if the information was there just across the board, at least if it's in Excel, you know, I can configure it like by school or whatever.
Yeah. It's, it's not readily available in that type of format, because we have recruiting and talent and staffing management both involved in this process. So, recruiting is involved, because there are jobs that are posted, staffing fills them. Sometimes, we have to call schools to make sure they actually fill the position. I mean, there's manpower involved in it. But honestly, it would be a helpful document for me. So, we will certainly endeavor to see what we can do.
Well, and my concern is, and I brought this up before, that the lion's share of the vacancies are in one district. And it would be very...
In one zone, you mean?
In one zone. It would be very interesting to see which schools, and maybe that's starting to pull up the crabgrass to see why.
Okay. I agree.
Ms. Giavennelli, did you have any questions?
Yes. So, this was open for, this position's been open for 10 months, and I had, my question was why? Why wasn't it filled sooner? And now, we're filling with, from within, why didn't that happen sooner? I'm concerned over the process and the delay, and the hardship that it's put on the department when we haven't had an auditor in that position since February 27 to 21. I mean, that's 10 months ago.
I asked Dr. Desmore to stand by, because this isn't her department. As you know, we don't have centralized hiring. So, her department was charged with filling this position. So, if she wants to come up and share what she can.
Thank you.
Also, how many applicants applied for this position?
There, there were five, yes. As Rob mentioned earlier, there were five applicants that applied for the position. One of them did drop out before the interview process. So, we interviewed all four of the, you know, remaining candidates that applied for the position. And our process, which was a multi-divisional process in terms of the interview, we came down to our final decision to fill it with our current Director of Finance, Mr. Michael Gatewood. We had an update of that in the board update a couple of weeks ago with a copy of his resume. So, I'm sure you all recall seeing that. And then, the question was about filling the position. And so, for a little bit of time, there was some conversation and question about the, the organization, how the organization was going to be structured, where internal audit was going to be housed, how it's going to be housed, and then what responsibilities would be up underneath that department. And so, there were, as you may or may not know, that's a department of four. We have three auditors that work in the department, and then the director. So, we did go for some time with, without the director being filled. And I, I played the role of that person while that particular position was vacant, as we determined how it was going to be structured, what kind of responsibilities, and what kind of qualifications we wanted in the person. And so, when we determined that, we moved forward.
Is there any other questions? Ms. Giavennelli?
No, no, I'm not questioning the applicant, so please know that. I just wanted everybody to know that. I just, I'm concerned over the delay and the process in which the delay has happened, and, you know, and the hardship that it's put on other staff members. So, none of my concern. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much. I'm going to go to Ms. Vaughn, and then back to Ms. Gittens.
Yeah, Dr. Desmore, what you said sparked a couple other questions in my mind. First of all, you said you were looking at structure in the department. Did you, in fact, need to tweak the job description at all?
No, we haven't changed the job description at this point, no.
So, so basically, you wound up, after looking at it, just keeping, keeping what was there?
The, the job description is there, still intact. We did not change it, but we did have a different mindset related to what the ongoing responsibilities of the department would be and what type of experience we were looking for.
Okay, which obviously is different. I just wanted to clarify that. And secondly, obviously, that opens Mr. Gatewood's former position. What's the status on filling that? Or will it be, does it need to be filled?
Definitely needs to be filled. It's being advertised this week for the next couple of weeks. And then, we'll see what applicants we get and how we move forward from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, I'm going to go to Ms. Fisher first, because she hasn't spoken yet, and then I'll come back to you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so thank you, Dr. Desmore. So, when was the internal auditor position first advertised? And when did the five people apply?
I don't, I don't recall the exact dates of it, so I would have to go back and get that. I don't...
It was advertised in the summer, during the summer. I don't know the exact date.
No, it was very recent.
September.
Mr. Dode, do you know the answer?
I think it was, I believe, I believe it may have been advertised twice, but the most recent time it was advertised was September. Yeah.
And what was the other question, Ms. Fisher, you had?
Quite true, though.
With the...
Well, no, the very last time it was advertised was very recently. We had interviews...
I know it was advertised September.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay, and...
Sorry, go ahead.
I had a, a possible suggestion. You, by the conversation, it seemed as though the ask is time-intensive. So, if we were to look at just the highest need schools, the highest, the schools with the highest achievement gap, and the schools with the highest capacity numbers, and chose at least three criteria, and rather than doing it across the board, which would be time-intensive, and, I mean, I might suggest that, if it's all right with everyone else, to look at maybe the top three or four schools that fit those categories to be able to monitor and see how they're doing and what we can do to help them.
Well, my first reaction to that is, I'm not sure what categories we're using. So, I'm not quite sure how to quantify that. I can get with academic services, for sure, and help to... I can get with academic services for sure and help to identify those schools and Dr. Savage.
For example, you know, Title I, high achievement gap, high capacity, high vacancies.
Yeah, I think we can do that. Go ahead, Dr. Savage.
Yeah, I'm happy to just speak to this for a minute. I believe Ms. Gittens is referring to the instructional vacancies section of this piece.
Yeah.
So one of the things that I'd asked the staff to do really since the beginning of the school year was to give a breakdown by, we actually tier our schools and that tiered process takes into consideration things such as what you're talking about, the population being served and some of those hard-to-staff schools. That's precisely one of the things we were looking at. And the reason why I wanted to be able to look at that information on an ongoing basis, review that operationally, is because we need to know, here's the vacancies we have, what's the current game plan, who's in the worst shape, and then work our way down from there. And so one of the core functions of the academic cabinet has since been to brief every two weeks on that status report. So I get that as a part of a live, I can ask the school executive directors who physically go out to those schools, so if they have two mathematics openings, what are they doing to cover for that right now? I mean, obviously, that's operational, it's a large district, so that's all done during the meeting, they're able to give that information. What we were, what we found pretty compelling was, while the vacancy was pretty high, and specifically, I was more interested in the core vacancy area, so I'm looking in the areas that are, we really desperately need someone there because what we know is historically, if students do not have a teacher in their core area and it's a substitute, it's a tough situation for those students from a learning outcome standpoint. So they, credit to the academic services team, it was really all hands on deck, really trying to put together that information and the updates. So at a school, there was a particular middle school, the East Zone, that had the highest number of the core vacancies. However, they had a, and that my ask was, if this is the school in the most dire situation, what's the plan right now? So from an operational standpoint, that's work that we do on an ongoing basis. That's a partnership between HR and academic services to try to really address those schools, specifically the ones of the highest need. So I don't know if that helps at least clarify organizationally some of the work that we're doing on that, but that doesn't necessarily have a on-demand document other than we're continuously updating that information. In fact, they had to pull from a number of sources to get me those original pieces. So any clarifications on that or is that some kind of in the ballpark of what you're looking for?
Yes, I mean, if you could share that with the board as to which schools are on the top of that list.
And it varies. We looked at it by total raw numbers as well as a percentage of the overall faculty, looking at the total core staffing. Those are all things we look at from an operational level. We do look at those pieces to make strategic decisions, to adjust resources, that's the daily work. But I get it, at least every two weeks, that item gets briefed back to me of, is there anyone who's gotten worse? Is there anyone who's gotten better? What's that type of work? So that's, I wanted to highlight that that's work that we do on an ongoing basis as well.
Thank you. And I want to get back on the agenda, if we can, which is the, now I don't know where we're at.
J2.
Approval of Personnel Recommendations.
No, no, we're out, we're next one.
One more question I have.
I'm sorry, say again?
One more question I have, real quick.
Yeah, go ahead, please, Ms. Javonelli.
What, the candidate, Mr. Gatewood, has he been doing the job since February 2021?
Say that again.
No, he hasn't been in the job since February of '21. I think that was the question.
Yes, thank you. But who's, so who's been doing the job?
Dr. Desmore says she's been doing it.
Yeah, Dr. Desmore's has been filling in and there's staff there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so J2?
I'll be happy to read J2. And also just to remind everyone on that particular item, you know, one of the things we talked about was beyond just financial audits, looking at process audits. That's again, part of that ongoing conversation around increasing the audit function to be more robust, so just wanted to highlight that for memory as well because we have talked about that issue, so I just want to make sure I reiterated that too.
Madam Chair, on J2, if there is no financial fiscal impact, I can withhold that one for now and discuss it later.
That's fine. There is no fiscal impact.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying. Thank you, thank you, Dr.... Thank you, Mr. Doty.
I'm happy to skip over that for J3 then. J3, approval to adopt the job description for Operations Division, Academic Services Division. The questions are, board needs to discuss need, how many and location, critical need schools, critical teacher shortages, et cetera. When will risk management be funded? Please explain in conjunction with Risk Management Department. Another question, I understand these are ESER funds and not sustainable. We need to find a way to put the ESER funds in the classroom and with bus drivers as that is where the immediate need is. Please advise what happens to this, create positions when the ESER funds go away. What is the plan? Mr. Doty?
Sure, and I think Dr. Savage and maybe Dr. Spiro can also join in. The first one's about the principal coach position. The intent is for three of those positions to be budgeted, including a combination of full-time and part-time positions. The positions would be for up to three years, but of course, we would review that after a year to determine if we should keep using ESER funds to fund those positions. Right now, our principals are dealing with so much, as you all know, and we have principals, over 16 new principals that are in their first two years of their careers as principals. And we also have many other principals that are beyond those amounts of years who also need support. So this would bring extra support to both inexperienced and experienced principals, and this would bring people, veteran principals or former principals into these jobs to provide intensive support for current principals so they could better serve their staff and who can better serve their students. For me, as the Executive Director of Human Resources, it's important because right now we need to retain our staff. And so getting principal coaches that can help our principals do that is of paramount importance. And I don't know if Dr. Savage wants to share anything else.
Just to say, you know, some, I can think of one in particular school, staffed by an incredible principal in a very high-need setting, does not have any vacancy issues to deal with right now instructionally, and that is with a very tough population. And so there is no doubt that the leader in the building makes a difference. I think all of our leaders are doing the very best that they know how to do. I think we have an obligation to them through the unprecedented times to provide them every layer of support we can. When you think about the ESER funds, this will be a .0001% of the overall piece and the impact will be on thousands of staff, thousands of staff. And that's important because that impacts thousands more children. So, you know, we think of a principal, the investment in our principals is an investment in the people who work in their buildings, which is an investment for children. The research is very clear, the impact of a principal. Everyone is trying their very best, but we all have opportunities to improve. This is a chance to improve the culture of our district and want to support and continue to invest in the people who we ask to do such very difficult jobs. That is not to say that the 99.9% isn't going to go to our staff and the resources within our schools, but it is very important that we not omit leadership when that is a core function of part of the ESER approach as well, is to understand that not all of our learning populations are the same. There are schools, a large majority of these new principals go out to the East Zone. We have a lot of needs out there, we have a lot of support to give our principals. So just want to echo what Mr. Doty said, we can't talk about working conditions and then say, what are we doing to support how our leaders create those working conditions? It's vital.
Ms. Gittens and then Ms. Fisher?
Okay, so let me just go on record as saying, I am not against a position that would help our principals. I was at an event this last weekend and spoke to a couple and I've spoken to several in the last few days and there's an article I'm going to share with all of you that was on CBS News this morning, and I don't know if anyone saw it, about the stress and the difficulties of administrators in this day and age in education. So I am not against that. What I do want to say is that I really believe we need to focus and let our teachers and support staff know, the minute we say ESER funds, the first thing out of our mouth should be what we're doing for the teachers and support staff. And I know it's .0001 and that's fine, but in the mind of these people that are working and stressed out, they are thinking they're secondary to someone helping their principal. I understand the concept and I understand the need, but the visual of it is saying to people in the trenches, we're going to do this and then we're going to do this. We need to really focus somehow, reprioritize and say, the purpose of the ESER funds was to help the most needy schools, the Title I schools. If we are going to do this, you know, this position and focus on those most needy schools, which is why I asked the previous question, how do we know who it is? How do we know who needs the most help? If that is our focus and we see that clearly, I understand this. But I still think we are, you know, cutting off our nose to spite our face by not saying something first about what is going to happen. I know that we've been trying, what, since June to try to get across the finish line with something with ESER funds for the staff, and it's still not happened. I, in all of the time that I have been with this school district, teaching, et cetera, normally at the end of December, there's a drop-off. There's people that leave. I have never in all of the time that I've been here seen the drop-off before Thanksgiving that we had this year. That was unprecedented. So if it's happening before Thanksgiving, you have no clue the tsunami that's going to happen in December. And we've got to get out ahead of it. If this position is going to help save that along with the fact of telling people, bus drivers, teachers, this is what we're doing for you, we've got to do it. We've got to get up off the stick and tell them what we're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. It's, I'm sorry, it's Ms. Fisher's turn.
So basically, I'm really not going to say much more than that. I think Mrs. Gittens put it into eloquent terms and I know that we need that support at schools. I've visited some schools and some of our most challenged schools. I know that definitely retention is the biggest job that we have right now because we are losing too many people who have experience, institutional knowledge and expert skills to other places because we're not meeting their needs. And I really believe that in addition to having that kind of support for our leadership, we need to be paying attention to the people in the trenches who are really working two jobs and often, in a very uncommon time. This is a difficult year and nothing is, I mean, I don't think anything's ever going to be normal again, but it has been very challenging in many ways with the social, emotional things, with the attendance issues and the stress and the economic problems that people have. So I think that we have to find a way to send that message, but thank you and thank you, Ms. Gittens.
Ms. Patrico?
Do I misunderstand the purpose of ESER funds, Dr. Savage? I thought it was to overcome issues associated with learning slides because of COVID. It wasn't directed just at Title I schools, but entire LEAs were to get these funds and help with COVID issues, both safe reopening and...
Go ahead. Yes, they have within the guiding document, and again, we, this is a good thing for us to review as often as we possibly can, but there are certain critical pieces that have to be achieved. And ESER 2 kind of started out and ESER 3 clarified and simplified some of that. So essentially, we have to tether these unrestricted funds back to these specific assurances, among them, learning loss being one of them, others having to do with the learning losses achieved with targeted populations. They also have to fit in broad buckets, categories, and so these particular areas, this fits under a professional development approach. The idea of knowing that you don't have people walking in the door, how are we developing the people we have? As Ms. Fisher said, it's all about retention. It's all about retaining our staff, which means investing in the people we have. And then to Ms. Gittens' point, it's identifying those areas. It's not particularly for just one zone, though what we do find is, one zone does have a higher proportion of working poor, working class, and in some of the learning losses, we've studied not just here in Lee County, but across the whole country, have hit hard communities harder in ways that they simply could not, to overcome. And it's going to take multiple years to do it. It's going to be a multiple-year effort. This is just one attempt among many. Leaders who have to then address those needs within those schools, this is a support system from proven folks who've done that hard work in these types of communities and have been very successful for students and quite frankly, it's not just in some schools. We have students in all of our schools that fit into this profile. There is not a school that has been spared from this particular piece, so this is something that cuts across the entire organization. And just one other piece, we talked about our brand-new principals in '16 within the first two years, which is a huge number, and more to come in the next year. But the reality is even seasoned principals, even principals who've been doing this for a decade or more, going through the pandemic, it makes everyone feel like a rookie. This is a very difficult time and so it's very important that we invest in our leaders. I can't state that enough. So thank you for all of your comments kind of highlighting around this area.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in on this also. Actually, in the past week, I've had a similar conversation with both Dr. Savage and the one-on-one and Mr. Doty, and I absolutely agree with what Ms. Gittens said and also what Ms. Fisher said. I mean, this is absolutely, so I understand the whole concept, but like Ms. Gittens said and Ms. Fisher, it's, there's a lot with perception and, you know, when I talk to teacher friends of mine, what's the first thing that they hear? Oh, they're giving it all to. And true or not, it's a huge perception that's hard to fight against. That said, I do have a question about the job description itself. So, Mr. Doty, you said, I believe, that you were looking first at funding three and you mentioned full and part-time. When I look at the pay grade and it said, actually, Dr. Savage, when you and I talked about this on the one-on-one, I recall you saying, well, this isn't really administrative, it's more professional development. So if you could clarify that and also one of you, Mr. Doty or Dr. Savage, clarify, how do we put on here part-time? We don't have part-time. Is it something that would be a person that would have split duties? Would part-time to me generally means that person doesn't get the benefits that a full-time person, so to me, that's kind of a big missing piece on this job description, so...
I'll just address that first. The ad could certainly say part-time and then the person would potentially get benefits if they're 30 hours. So it could be part-time with benefits, but only work 30 hours per week. The reason Dr. Savage and I and Dr. Spiro have speculated about part-time is because we're hoping to get some retired educators back to help us do this. So those folks, you have to obviously be receptive to folks that have left and may not want completely full-time work. That's why, they could all be full-time. I mean, we have budgeted for all full-time in ESER, so that's why I use the term of part-time because we just weren't sure.
Well, and just to clarify on that, as I mentioned about the administrative side, again, when we have administrative positions that are designed to supervise and evaluate staff, that is one of those pieces that we often look at. These positions are designed to develop, that is, they are done in the professional development. That is their goal, not to supervise a grant, not to supervise individual staff, but to really be a professional development investment in our existing leaders. So for example, we have some retired principals, some in recent years, one in particular was very highly achieving, had led tremendous growth in some of our schools, a tremendous achievement. You know, this becomes something that may be attractive if done on a part-time basis where they don't have to give up five days a week, but that one person, if they were to work with numerous individuals, would certainly be a tremendous value add in that type of setup. Others you might have in the very end of their career, so they're maybe looking to retire, maybe they don't have much time left, and that they really want to be able to go out giving a value add to the district in this way. This gives us the flexibility and the units through ESER to be able to do exactly what the job intends, which is support our existing staff.
But we're being asked to approve a job description here and there's a whole area that's quite... and there's, there's a whole area that's, that's quite vague. It might be part-time, 30 hours, maybe they'd get benefits, maybe not.
That's typically not in a job description, though, Ms. Vaughn.
Well, but, all right. And I'm, I'm just going to say, I don't get that.
Okay.
Not in the job description, that it's okay to have people just part-time.
Okay, so here's my thought pattern on this. Ms. Patrica mentioned about the ESER funds being about the slide. Yes, that is true. But it is also very obvious where the largest slide is. If we're looking at three zones and the largest slide is in one zone, then yes, there are students in all the zones that, you know, fall into that slide area, but the lion's share of those students, that number of students, is one area. So what about the possibility of full-time in one and part-time in the other two based on the numbers of students that need to be serviced in those particular areas? We know that the East Zone has a plethora of these students and teachers and administrators that need assistance. They have the plethora of the vacancies, the plethora of the Level Ones and Twos, the plethora of all of it. So my thought about it, you know, I will, I can support it if I know that most of the, the time and effort is going to go where most of the children that need that time and effort are located, and that is in the East Zone.
And that's understandable. I would say the way we're splitting it isn't, it's really based on the need. So, you know, we already gave the example of 16 principals in the first or second year. They've only experienced life as a principal within the pandemic environment. That's just right out of the gate. We also know that we have a lot more than just our first and second-year principals that need support and in different areas. So what we're really looking for is a talented group, a support system that can, that can support us from multiple dimensions. The number one thing that principals are responsible to create in their buildings is the culture. That's the focus of student achievement. That's the way they support their staff. It's the way they engage their staff in decision-making. It's how organized they are. It's how they communicate. It's everything above. It's a very difficult job. And so principals bring something to the table, or they wouldn't be where they are. But that doesn't mean that all principals don't also and couldn't use additional support in helping them bridge those gaps specifically to benefit students and their staff. That's very important, and that's the core function of it. It's not going to be a situation where the East Zone gets one, the South Zone gets one. It would be much more responsive to the individual people they are there to assist, which are the leaders. They'll vary in degrees of intensity. So if a leader really needs a great deal more support, they might have a more intensive arrangement, more days a week, more times of day. That's something that we work hand-in-hand with school, uh, school development as well as professional development, working together to have the best thorough plan and complement, complimentary strategies to support our principals right now through very difficult times.
Can I just say, my last thing that I'm going to say about it, though, is we, I don't see us doing this based on the principals that are new and the principals that need whatever. This is ESER funds, and ESER funds are focused on the slide and on students. And I think that our first measurement as to where, where to start this and what to do it has got to be what the ESER funds are for, the slide of students, and not how long a principal's been a principal and how much help they need. If they're at a school that has a large slide and has a large need of students, which is the purpose of ESER, then fine.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to let Ms. Morgan...
Yeah, I think we're conflating a couple of things. So what I'm hearing is that people are concerned about the fact of, of the optics of providing financial support to leadership in schools and not hearing about how the funds are going to be spent on students and programs. And, and I believe that really is a workshop item. We have, this is less than 1% according to Dr. Savage of the budget. We're wondering, where is the other 99% planning to be spent? And I think we need to focus on, you know, across the board, where is this money going? I've been trying to ask this question for a while, and, and we're only going to answer it because we're being forced by the state to answer that question, which is of concern to me. But I, I think we're conflating a couple of things here, and I think we need to move on. But I understand Ms. Gittens' point. I just, I think we're, we're focusing on one eye, you know, one little piece, and we're not focusing on the whole plan and putting that one piece in the context of our whole plan.
Children.
Yes.
If I can just add to that piece, so for example, this is ongoing work. I think it's a fair question. We'd love to bring some more information back to the board for a workshop item, just to give you a sense. I'm looking at a spreadsheet that we literally met on last week that articulates over $270 million worth of expenditures, lots and lots of individual positions. We could have this robust discussion about every single line item in our operational register. So this is the work, clearly. How we invest it, I think it's very fair to say, you as a board want to be as informed as possible. We actually are bringing back to the community, getting community input in these things as well. But, but even among our group, having to prioritize the vast amount of things that were asked to try to speak to this issue as well as all the other pieces. So it is, it's a very, it, there's a lot here, but I appreciate the comment, and certainly we can bring something back to the board in the workshop.
Thank you. And Dr. Savage, you just made mention, and I'm going to get back on track, that you're bringing it to the community. I think it needs to make sure that we, it is seen amongst us so that way we know what is going on with the funds and we are able to speak on that because that, that is, perception is everything. We already understand that. And we need to make sure that we are putting out the right narrative, the right story so that everybody knows that we do hear them, we do care, and we do understand that helping leadership and bringing that back down to everybody else, that's really important as well. So thank you. And I will say that we are already 30 minutes over. And it was, and we did take the time to really sit down there and try to figure out how much time it would take for us to get through this agenda. So I, I just want to let you all know that.
Madam Chair, I have a four o'clock hard spot.
Well, and I have four o'clock bargaining, so there's...
I have a 3:45.
There's a question about, do you want me to answer the next question, or are we...
We're the next, yes.
All right, so that's the Risk Management, Director of Safety and Security and Risk Management. The question was, I believe, about in conjunction with Enterprise Risk Management Division. Of course, that's up to the board as to when that would be funded. In, in lieu of that, this job description that's coming forward tomorrow night simply modifies the Director of Safety and Security job description to make the risk aspect more explicit in the job description. As you know, Director of Safety and Security already talked about and spoke to a level of risk, but this helps to clarify for the organization that we have some accountability related to risk if we're not going to create the division. There's a desire to have more of our organizational leadership focused on limiting risk in the district. I know Ms. McFarland in Insurance and Benefits would certainly appreciate that. And we've discussed a lot of this in our one-on-one meetings with you all and during the briefing a couple of weeks ago.
Questions?
So are you saying then that this is already a funded position? There's already someone in it, and you're just changing the qualifications and abilities?
The, the position is not occupied. It is vacant, and it does not include the title of Risk Management in it in addition to what has been added, which I don't have in front of me. But basically, it's Director, Safety, Security, and Risk. We currently have on the books a job titled, entitled Director, Safety and Security that's not currently occupied. So this will be bringing back that job description. Whether we occupy it or not, of course, that would be up to the superintendent and the board.
Well, it says no fiscal impact, so that to me says then...
Job description.
A job description.
That you're not filling.
The fiscal impact would be if the position gets filled.
Exactly, and that would come back to us prior to...
Of course, yes.
This is part of, that we've seen...
Right, no, I know, the risk management and all, okay. I, I just want to make sure that we don't, the next time we see it, it's, it's the final name of somebody to, to do it.
The next time you see it would be tomorrow night to vote on it.
No, but you know what I'm saying.
I do.
You, you, anyway.
And that very well could happen. Ms. Fisher, or anyone else on this side? Any questions regarding that?
None on that.
Ms. Jevonelli?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I think there's...
Thank you on that one, though.
Okay, you're welcome.
Maybe to the next one.
All right, this one, I believe, is J. 4 and J. 5. Approval of employment contracts with assistant school board attorneys and the different candidates named. These questions are, I believe the board needs more discussion on this org chart and the legal processes for the district at this time. Further discussion needed. I have to see the value in these two positions. I would like to see goals and a plan with the legal department. Please provide a plan and goals in place to show the value in this legal department. I want to see litigation cases diminished. And if growth of the legal department, department does, I can get behind that. Show me the data that other districts that has legal department have litigation costs reduced with increased legal teams. Show me the value. I would rather see monies put in the classroom and increased raises for Spalk and South positions bus drivers need. I have advised, then another comment, question was, I have advised Attorney Dupree-Burner that I will not support the recommendations at this time. So while I know Mr. Dotig was here, I believe you were going to turn it over to our Board Attorney Bill to speak to some of this?
Absolutely, yes. I, I am only aware of the plan that was approved in August by the board, so...
So we have been down two attorneys since last summer. There was an original attempt to hire attorneys, I believe in July. None of the candidates were thought to be what we needed at the time. Then in August, we restructured the legal department, and it was approved by the board on August 17th. The new job descriptions were brought forth to the board on October 19th and approved. And then the budget for these two positions were also approved by the board. In August, when this was presented to the board, all of the various information was provided to include what we were doing in terms of our population, our cases, where we were in terms of auto and physical and property claims, where we were in terms of errors and omissions. We also discussed various other legal department models from Miami-Dade to Orange County, Hillsborough, Pinellas, and various other counties. All of that was presented to the board. And then we described the different responsibilities for all of the attorneys. And then we talked about the cost savings. At the time, based on the proposed budget, there was a cost savings of $261,000 that was projected with the inclusion of these two attorneys. So this was presented to the board on August 17th and approved by the board on August 17th. So at this time, we're just moving forward with the approved job descriptions and reorganizational plan that the board already approved. These are superintendent recommendations. And again, good cause would be the qualifier if there is a concern about moral fitness or whether or not the candidates are qualified. These candidates went through the process pursuant to our board policy 5.05. In addition, they were then presented to HR. HR did the vetting. And so at this point, these are the candidates that are presented to the board.
Uh, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry. Where's the budget piece?
That was in September, was part of the budget that was presented to the board because there were four positions, four attorney positions, two paralegal positions, and one secretary that was approved by the board.
Yeah, but what were the, what was the, the amount of the...
Oh, the total amount. And when you say amount, Ms. Morgan, specifically in terms of the total amount for that department?
Yeah.
It was for fiscal year 2022, $1,085,000. The prior projection for fiscal 2022 was $1,209,812,000. With the restructuring and the reorg, there was a cost savings of 19%, $261,281.
And did that budget include fees for external legal counsel?
This budget was specifically for the two offices. The external fees were in another slide that I can pull up.
I apologize for not doing more work on this. I was with FSBA last week. I really, I'm sort of behind the eight ball on doing all of it.
And you said two position, you said two offices?
There were, the approval was seven total positions in legal. That was the, what was presented to the board and what was approved. And this is basically, was just a restructuring of what we had before because we had those positions, and then we added the paralegal. And one person was upgraded to a paralegal status.
I'm sorry, so what, what, what did you budget for, for external...
I have to, I have to look at that, Ms. Morgan.
Asking about the budget for external counsel.
So for 2022, the original budget for external counsel was $65,000 under the Board Attorney's Office. And under the Staff Attorney's Office, it was $85,000.
Okay, well, you know, I, I've, I've heard what you've said about, you know, where we stand and that we're not in a position to say no. But I, you know, I, I have to say to the board, I have a real problem here because we approved very generic job descriptions, which I understand for staff attorneys. I mean, you don't want to lock people in to operate, you can't hear me?
Tap it and see.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just low, but that's all right.
I, I don't understand. Anyway, I understand when you do job descriptions, you don't want to make them so tight that you don't have flexibility in your organization over time. But I'm looking at the two people, the one person who's being brought forward as a board attorney, school board attorney. And this is, these are in the school board attorney functions, construction, business operations, real estate agreements, interlocal agreements, procurement, cops, land use planning, risk management, audits, grants, charter schools. And I see nothing in the two people who would fill those positions or be responsible for those jobs. There's no experience in, or skills that I see that address this need. I mean, I think we, originally back in 2018, when we talked about creating a, a legal department, the third position was operations and finance with experience in all of these things that I just read. And that's not what we're getting. I'm trying to understand, even though this person, we have to appoint this person because we have the job, we've approved the job, and we don't have the authority to say no to an appointment, I do believe we have a responsibility to say that there's no value added in, in terms of a legal department with respect to the, the appointments that's being made. So I am very, very, very concerned about this going forward. I don't think we have, this does not provide for me the competencies that I believe a $2 billion corporation needs in its legal department.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
I, I think back on when we first approved, I think you said back in August and, and prior to that. We're in a pickle right now. We need attorneys. We need to just, you know, I hate to keep saying this. We need to get up off the stick and do something. We need attorneys. But I, I'm not seeing this particular organization of it as working for us. I, I'm looking at it openly. I'm concerned about the, the definitive split between the staff attorney and all the rest of the attorneys. And I know that you will work together and all of that. But when I look at it in the big picture, the board attorney and the superintendent are our employees. And how does this affect, you know, one attorney report, reporting to one of our employees? And I don't know. I, I just, I don't know what to say to fix it. The bottom line, I know we need attorneys because the ones that we have now are getting worked, I'm sure, to death if we went from a department this big to just a few people right now. We have got to do something. I just don't know if this is, this is the right way to do it. And I know it was approved before, but I, I don't know. I'm not, anyway.
Ms. Patrica, and then I'm going to ask Ms. Jevonelli.
Two questions. Have, have I received resumes for the applicants?
Have, have I received resumes for the applicants, for the appointees?
They're all available for any board member that wanted to see it. And if somebody wanted a copy, we provided copies.
Can you send me one, please? And, and since this is a superintendent recommendation, Dr. Savage, could you speak to the concerns that were just raised with regard to, with, with regard to what Ms. Morgan said?
My understanding is they, they have to be superintendent recommendations. I think one of the concerns that I would just have just in general with a lot of the commentary that I've heard so far, and I think is not a new commentary, is just this idea that there's, you know, there's board employees, there's board member employees, and then there's school district employees, there's staff, there's board. And I think the, the big concern, you know, from my perspective, since I've come in this position is, you know, we are one organization. Everyone works for the school board, all of us. I'm your employee, Kathy's your employee, an auditor, if the board chooses to hire an auditor, but everyone who works for me in terms of the organizational chart and being placed within the organization, every recommendation that comes forward coming from me, it's strictly a byproduct of the fact that you are the board. We all work for the board. And so the concerns that we've had over time of where different council land on the piece, you know, whether it's the, the model we were all, I was accustomed to for the many years I was here with Keith Martin and Rob Dotig, you know, each having a staff attorney and a board attorney, we've moved to a general council model. That was briefed to the board and then August 17th, August 19th, the, the vision was put forward via our board attorney under a general council approach, which says we are one legal team. That's the nature of it. I have attempted very much so to work in the spirit of that working arrangement, that if we need legal services, we work with the general council because the general council represents the school district of Lee County, the school board of Lee County. That's the general council model. And when I've inquired with other districts that run this model, including Collier, it's in the south, that is what they say it is. It is one organization, one set of attorneys. It isn't my attorney and then your attorney, except in very specific circumstances where contracts, where we have very different interests or we're representing different roles. Our person's taking a prosecutorial function, the other's assisting the board. So I think a lot of the concern, if there is a concern about the recommendations made by the, our general council, you know, I'm attempting to work within that environment. Obviously, these are on my recommendation, but these are really the direction that was briefed to the board via the, the general council. So, you know, I would, I would say to Kathy, you know, if you'd be willing to share why this rationale makes the most sense, that's my best understanding of why this function was put forward and, and the research you did of looking at other districts and putting that into your material of which districts use it, how does it work, what's it supposed to look like? I understand it's different than what we've done in the past, but that's, that's my response of where, where I thought we were at relative to this piece.
So that's not my question. I'm sorry. I'm not questioning the structure of the department. I'm not questioning that. What I'm questioning is the, I mean, you have to make the recommendation. I have to assume you looked at the resumes. I have to assume that you looked at the, you know, the position that's being filled, the necessary experience associated with the position that's being filled. And what is it about the resumes that you saw that makes you comfortable making this recommendation to the board is my question, really.
So, so let me just explain a little bit about the process. So applicants applied, it went through HR, and then we had a team of individuals that did the interviews. That included the chief of staff, that included the chief, the executive director of human resources, and that included, I think it was about four, if I remember correctly, four or five people that sat in this interview process. All of the candidates who applied were interviewed with the exception of one person who actually didn't have a license. So that person was disqualified. But everybody else who applied was interviewed. We went through the questioning, we looked at the resumes. Everyone who applied for school board attorney level two actually had very similar backgrounds. There was nobody that had any particular experience in construction or real estate. Those are the candidates that we had. This is not the first time that we looked at attorneys. This happened last summer. And again, even in that pile of individuals, there was nobody that had specific real estate or construction or any type of experience in that background. So these are the candidates that we have. After going through the interview process, the people who were in the committee felt that we actually had good competent individuals to choose from. And after going through the individual process, the two candidates that are before you are individuals that scored the highest and seem to be the best fit for this district.
Ms., Ms. Morgan?
This reminds me of a comment that was made back in 2011 when a superintendent was hired because the board couldn't come up with a better candidate, so they, they took what they got instead of going back out and looking for a candidate. I just, just because this is all we've got, have we recruited? Have we really worked to identify people working in these areas and asked them? I mean, I just, I understand the process. We are almost a $2 billion corporation, and I just feel like we're going for, feels like applying because we've put out some sort of a job. And I, I hate to be saying this, but I don't, I don't think we're looking for creating a high performing, highly qualified legal team with, with this recommendation.
And, and I, thank you, Ms. Morgan. And I'm, I'm going to go back to what was made, a comment that was made about how we had candidates prior that did not have the qualification either. But at that time, we did not offer them a position. So if we did not offer those people a position because they were not qualified or they did not have the qualifications, why now? And I understand that we're busy. Why now would we, why would we do that now when they do not have the non-qualifications as the other ones did not?
So the first pool was pursuant to job descriptions that were very, very specific. And those were the, like, for example, the first pool was with regards to, I think, I don't remember exactly how it was worded, but I believe it was worded something about business operations or something like that. That was in the summer. Nobody with business operations applied for those positions. They did not meet the minimum qualifications for those positions because they didn't have the experience from that job description. We revised the job description. It's a little bit more broad because we want people to be able to come in who can bring various experiences because there are so many various issues that we deal with in this district. And those people who applied met the minimum qualifications. There was nothing in the job descriptions that specifically said that you needed to have an operations or a construction background. So those individuals who applied did meet those particular qualifications as was vetted by the committee that interviewed them as well as HR.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I hate to interrupt, I know Ms. Patrica has a hard stop, but item O directly impacts her. And I'm wondering if we should cover that prior to her departure?
I'm not allowed to say Ms. Gittens about, so. Okay. So I will, if I, if I may, I forgot my whole train of thought there, Ms. Gittens.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to have to come back to my head. Ms. Giavennelli? Ms. Giavennelli?
Yes.
I know that you're here and you had comments regarding this?
Well, when I look at the org chart, my concern is the fact that it's still split under the superintendent and under the, the board attorney. So these positions, so I am a little, I am also concerned regarding also the situation with Ms. Rhodes, what's the status on that? That's not being discussed. I think we really need to discuss this with the legal department. Maybe I'm parking on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would just say there's some urgency because two people's names are on the board agenda for tomorrow evening. So the board can certainly do what they choose regarding those individuals with the advice of your attorney, but there are two individuals that would need to be informed of what's happening, if something is happening, just for the sake of professionalism, I would suggest. So that's, at this point, all I have to say, other than the individuals that were interviewed met the minimum qualifications for the job.
So they met the minimum qualification and then the, the monies or salaries that they were offered were negotiate, were given to, to whom?
The board attorney negotiated, the board attorney was provided a range for those positions according to our Employment Research Index, ERI, the market rate, and she undertook the negotiations. We, HR was not involved in that at all.
And, and the, the funds again are, are budgeted. So this was already a process and it was already approved by the board.
And then I guess I'm going to ask, I know, probably shouldn't ask this, but does, how does that affect our other attorney who is here? When you bring in new attorneys and, I mean, and the salaries of the negotiation for water and heating?
She, she, she has a contract with the board. That's all I can tell you regarding that.
Equity and that. Thank you for, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, and I mean, I'm looking at this, and I know Mr. Hudak is already in the position, doing the position, so maybe discussing how that affects him. He's already here. Is this changing what he does? And then the other attorney, Ms. Zupki, is it?
Zupki.
You know, I think that Mr. Hudak already being on staff should not necessarily be interrupted in his position, which kind of leaves with the additional person. I, I don't, I don't know.
Are there any other questions regarding this?
Can you discuss, would this change his position at all or is it staying the same?
So he, he actually has been doing things that are more attorney type jobs with the EOC and OCR. So this is going to be officially making him an attorney and ensuring that he has the, all of the attorneys get the, the insurance in case there are any issues. That really, he's going to continue to do a lot of the things that he's doing. He's also going to continue to be working with HR, a lot of the things that he's already doing with HR, and then taking it to the next step so that we can start bringing more of these outside legals in-house. For example, in the past, we have used Samantha Soho for EOC and OCR cases. Once Mr. Hudak is official, we'll be able to bring that in-house and that'll save the district some money because those, those cases are tens and tens of thousands of dollars. So that, that I think would, it's not going to be effective. Now, we do need to, we're going to have a conversation about the equity investigations, but that's something that we'll be discussing with the superintendent.
And then how does that work when, if you're conflicted out of something and then we're paying outside counsel?
You have, you will have two attorneys who can step in if I am conflicted out or if I'm out or sick. You have two attorneys who can step in.
So how do they step in if they answer to you?
Because they are independent attorneys who can step in and handle whatever it is that I may not be able to handle if that is a reason. I mean, because there was the one time when I was conflicted out, it was a personal issue, not reflective of the position, but rather the person. So these attorneys will be able to step in and handle that.
Okay. And then if they are school board attorneys, then they are our attorneys because they're school board attorneys?
Well, I, I think Dr. Savage responded to that. I mean, the, the structure of the office doesn't determine, I mean, they represent the district and the board. Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan? I'm going to respectfully ask the superintendent proceed with Brian Hudak and withdraw the other recommendation.
Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Gittens?
Okay, so the two that we lost, Mr. Holloway, what was his area?
When Mr. Holloway got here, he was not an expert in business operations or any of that. He was trained by Mr. Williams to assist with that. Since Mr. Holloway and Mr. Williams have not been here, I have been dealing with operations and dealing with procurement and handling all of those matters. And I did send the board a very detailed onboarding for these attorneys. They will be supervised and they will be able to catch up very quickly. Contracts are something that pretty much all attorneys have to learn. And so I'm not really concerned about the contracts, just like me. I, I came in with very similar background and have been the board attorney. So I expect these attorneys to do the same thing. They have the skills, they have the skill set, and the knowledge in terms of the specific area is something that we can pick up.
Okay, so Holloway was not trained in what we're talking about from operations, that, that part. Williams was.
Well, he had the construction.
Right, Brian had worked in another district before coming here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, although he, when Brian Williams came here, he was not certified school.
And he was not working as an attorney the entire time that he was in Miami Dade either. He was working in a particular department in Miami Dade. And then when he came here, he became a generalist where you kind of learn pretty much all areas, just like what has happened to me, where I've become more of a generalist, where you have to learn HR, you got to learn procurement, you got to learn business operations, you got to learn IT stuff, you got to learn the contracts, UCC, all kinds of wonderful things that, because there's so much, and of course, risk management and litigation and liability is something that I'm strong with because that is part of my background. So we all bring our strengths to this. These attorneys, honestly, the ones that applied for this job probably had the most connection. If you're not working as an attorney in a district, which is very, very limited, because there are not a lot of attorneys that are working in a district that have that education law background, it's not, it's not widespread. If you're doing education law outside of a district, then your experience is really like ESC things, due process hearings and those kind of things. And pretty much all of the attorneys that applied in these positions for school board attorney too had that background, including the candidate that's before you today.
Okay, so just listening to the discussion, the, the big gap that we have, the dearth that we're going to have is the, the real estate and?
Well, I will.
The opera, yeah, the operations.
I will also say though, however, even when Mr. Holloway and Mr. Williams were here, the real estate was still farmed out. We still, we have Pavey's Law Firm, Michael Lehart, who assists us with all of our real estate transactions. And when these projects come in, there is actually a legal budget that is built into those projects for those special circumstances. So most likely, we still will have assistance from Michael. I talk to Michael on a regular, regular basis whenever something does come up from planning or from operations. And I think, I think the district will be fine. I, I do understand Ms. Morgan's concern. She did talk to me about that. I completely understand her concern. I do think that these attorneys will be able to really provide some very, very good legal representation to the district. And I have an onboarding plan and we have a support network of other school board attorneys throughout the state of Florida that we contact on a regular basis. We have our attorney to our south. We have all kinds of attorneys who can assist us when we have questions. So I do think our services will be needed. We have not had to farm out for business operations and, and financial services with the exception of contracts because we've been short, short-staffed. That's the only reason. Otherwise, I've been able to handle it and I'm sure that the other attorney will be able to do so as.
All right, just something else that may or may not be viable. When you came on board, we have, it's in your contract, isn't it, about getting the hours as a, is it a viable option? I know you have a contract for Ms. Zupki to say X number of hours at this point, or it's already negotiated and?
The contract is negotiated.
So it's a done deal.
However, in my onboarding, I've already, and I did indicate this to the board, that we already have some CL's continuing legal education classes that are scheduled.
Uh huh.
And we will continue to do that. And we will also attend the Florida School Board Association Conference in February to additionally expose ourselves to additional law. And, and I have already received all of the hours that I need to be able to sit for the exam, which I plan to do in July of 2022.
Okay, thank you.
So when you all attend that meeting, who's here?
Say it again?
When you all attend, you said everybody's attending that meeting? Who's here then?
In the conferences.
What will be the attorney that will be here?
So if there's, if there is a, if we are all attending a legal conference, which we need to do to continue with our continuing legal education requirements and there's an emergency, they call me, they text me, they email me, and I respond. And if they need one of the other attorneys, that's the way that we have done it, we, we, we have to go to these conferences. I mean, this is part of what we need to do to continue with our learning.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay. So, so my question is, I mean, I agree with Ms. Morgan with Mr., as I said previously, that Mr. Hudak should be fine. If I'm reading this correctly, Ms., and I don't want to mispronounce, Zupki or Zupki?
Uh, Zupki.
Zupki. Excuse me. That her responsibility will be business services, operations and labor and employment?
So what we're trying to do is make sure that all of the attorneys have exposure to all areas and anybody can step in. Mr. Hudak will be taking the lead on HR matters and Ms. Zupki will be taking the lead on business operations and financial services. And primarily what that is, is contracts. The biggest need that the district has from a legal standpoint is our contract review, contract negotiations. Sometimes we need to actually get in there and do the negotiations with staff. So that's really the biggest need and that's gonna be one of her primary responsibilities. We've been working with, um, we've been trying to continue to improve our contract process and that's also gonna be one of her biggest projects is to get in there and work with contracts. So a lot of it is contracts.
But is that where she comes from? Does she bring business services, operations and any labor employment?
None of the candidates have that background. All of the candidates for a school board attorney too have four more years or more in practice and, um, have legal knowledge and the attorney skill set. I mean, and last time when we advertised this position specifically for someone who had that background, we also did not get anybody with that background. So it's, right now, the market is very, very tight. And this is, I've had conversations with other attorneys about this, other law firms, and the market is very tight. And sometimes, I mean, we had, just for a simple position, we had advertised for somebody. Three people said they were gonna come. Nobody showed up. So the market, labor market right now is very, very difficult.
So hiring these two people, how is that going to equal out the job, uh, the workload that is currently being held? Because my understanding is, it's, it can be kind of lopsided unless we look at redistributing that work for, workload.
I'm not sure I understand that question.
Are you referring to like the, Ms. Schroed and some of that coming off of her? Because she has a lot, because she's one person to three people? I said that like a thousand times. So, um, so would some of that go to Mr. Hudak and come off of her?
So Ms. Schroed has been assisting with HR. So we actually had a meeting last week where, um, if the board moves forward and approves these hires, Mr. Hudak will be taking the lead on HR, which is something that he's been doing. And Ms. Schroed will be doing more in the academic services, what she has been doing. And then the new person will be doing more business operations. One of the things that we want to do is to have the attorneys look into their relevant areas and departments to find where the holes are. We talked about this at our legal team meeting last week where we can help the district in terms of risk management, legal risk and plugging in and fixing processes, because there's a lot of process issues. And we're thinking that as, for example, I, I mentioned this, I think in an email. One of the things in the quadruple A issue was that school board attorney was not involved at that level when all of some of these decisions were made and the board was not made aware of what's going on. So one of the things that we're trying to do is to make sure that legal is one team. I agree with you 100% Ms. Jordan. I agree with you 100% Ms. Gins. My preference would be that we are all under one umbrella and we are one team. And then we service the district. We come back. We're able to deal with the administration. We're able to deal with the board, make sure the board knows what's going on because we all know the buck stops with the board in terms of legal liability. And by allowing us to do that and kind of work with staff and know what's going on and that we are a team, we can do some of this prevention that is needed. It is not to be one-sided or both-sided. We are all working for the benefit of the district. And again, I agree with you 100%. I have been an advocate of one legal team.
Hey, where do we go from here? Can I, can I say one more thing?
Can I, do you need me? I have to go to the bargaining meeting. Is it okay if I leave?
Please take care of bargaining.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Please. If, it, it sounds as though what we're doing is, is hiring generalists and training them to be generalists and everybody cover everything. I just, I don't know. There's just, I have some angst about it. I just, I really do because, and I understand it's a tough job market. I understand it's not easy to find people. But I, I can just see us ending up still having to farm out stuff because as things come up, we don't have the people that have the expertise and, and they're getting OJT to get up to speed. I.
So we, so, and I can, I'm going to get this, um, this information for you. We haven't had to, with the exception of the contracts, which is because of the fact that we've been down to attorneys, we haven't had to farm out anything that is unusual or that was not being farmed out before. We, we have not had to do that. I've been able to sustain and work with staff and get things done. I think that the, um, so I, I really, I don't see that to be a problem. I think being a generalist and knowing what's going on in every department is a good thing. But with that said, that does not mean that each attorney won't have an area that they are really designated to. For example, Mr. Hudak will be designated to HR. Ms. Schroed continues with academic services. Ms. Zupki with operations and me, the board, governance policies and managing outside counsel. So everyone will have their role. We'll all know what's going on. However, it's good for, if I'm not here, that there's somebody who can step in and we're not paying outside counsel to step in for me because we don't have anybody. Or if there's something that's going on in HR, somebody can step in. So that's, that's what we're looking for.
I am going to, because we are so far behind this. And I know when we made this, the time for this, I don't think all these things were, I don't recall all of this being on this agenda when we sat down and decided the timeline. So I don't know if you all will, um, finish going through all of this. There are now three of us here. Ms. Jivelli maybe still with us?
Coming back.
So do you want to continue?
I'm on the call. This is Chris Patrino.
Okay. And we have, Chris Patrino is on the phone. Okay. So everybody's still.
Absolutely.
We've got to finish. I mean, this is coming up tomorrow night. So.
Absolutely. Yes, Ben Chair, this next item. Quickly scroll up here.
L seven.
Yep. L seven, uh, which is approval of expenditure for the locksmith and installation services. The question is if no schools are needing to be rekeyed and this is ongoing maintenance, this is gonna be handled by our own in-house locksmith department. I thought we have a locksmith department that consists of four men. Why is that not sufficient to handle this ongoing locks business? Let's save the 150,000, put it back in the classroom where the immediate need is. How much was spent in years one and two for red lock installation in 34 facilities? Uh, if no further work except emergencies anticipated, why release 150,000 for other uses we have for in-house locksmiths and materials should be under warranty? And it's my privilege to have for the first time back again, Mr. Frederick Ross, our executive director in operations, here to provide the response. So, uh, Executive Director Ross, take it away.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you to the board, Dr. Savage, Attorney Dupree Bruno. Thank you for this question. Um, yes, we do have four in-house locksmith, tradesmen that, that handle the day-to-day operations, day-to-day work that comes in. This particular $150,000 is just the approval of the expenditure and would only be used as needed when things come up above those four locksmiths bandwidth. So when, when they're already engaged and additional work comes up, emergencies or just unforeseen work that, um, again is above their bandwidth, that is when this contract would be engaged. No, uh, paid, no immediate, um, funds go out onto this vendor until needed. And if nothing comes up during the year, uh, no funds would be used. Currently, no work is scheduled for this.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Ms. Vaughn, I know you had a question. Could you respond to that?
Yeah. Um, how much was spent in the first two years on this red lock installation?
So the number I, I do have from since 2018, um, for locksmith services, the number is $12 million and that included the upgrades included for those red locks per the Marjorie Douglas Act. And that is.
Yeah. Was that under this same contract with these two vendors?
It was under, it was under multiple contracts. So this one was for the service and then the actual hardware, the actual lock hardware was purchased off a different contract.
Right. I, I was actually looking for the number from these two vendors, how much was spent and the number of facilities, um, were 34 facilities is what's mentioned in board doc information. So.
For the, for the previous expenditure on the contract, yes, that was for the upgrades. And, um, we can get you specifically that number for the 34, um, facilities.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just going with what's on board docs and on these, on these two vendors. So, um, uh, the only, and I understand what you're saying. I guess Ms. Jivelli had a similar question.
Ms. Jivelli?
Tip, yeah. Typically, if, if we have this, um, I think there was reference of another contract after, after this. I, I just, um, this, this 150 will be, I don't know the technical, like encapsulated. It's, it's like there budgeted for only.
For only if something comes up.
And I, I don't, like Ms. Jivelli, I'm not understanding with, um, expert locksmiths in-house and also if something comes up with, um, materials that were installed, those materials hopefully will be under warranty. So I don't, I don't see where the additional money is gonna be needed and I would love to see it put in, in another silo.
It may not be. I mean, that's, correct me if I'm wrong there, Executive Director Ross, but the, on this particular pace, this is really, the, the work has been completed. The project has been finished. The issue is if there is some, there isn't, and there's no additional work even expected at this time. I think the, the notion here is that if there were a need, this does give that particular dollar figure associated to it if it were to be utilized. And it's just in place for this, this period if they were necessary.
That, that's correct.
And just because we have the money, it's the, an approval for an expenditure up to that amount that's within the budgeted funds, but that does not mean that we will, our plan to expend even a single dollar. So in that way, this isn't necessarily gonna be money that we, it's not like we can't use. This is just an approval for an expenditure. Mr. Ross, is there anything else that I'm missing on?
No, that's 100% correct. If nothing comes up, um, it would not be used.
Right. But.
And, and it allows the maintenance staff to quickly respond when those additional needs or emergency comes up. Without this, um, you know, if a project were to come up over the bid threshold, they would have to take the time to get it approved and, and come to, come to you for approval. This allows them to, um, go ahead and quickly respond to those needs.
And I, I think that the problem is though, is the amount of money. So could that amount of money be lowered and still take care of just in case emergencies where that money could go elsewhere as they're speaking on the schools or classrooms and?
Yes, it could be, um, it could be lowered. But again, if something came up above that amount, it would, um, it would prevent them from responding as quicker, quickly. So it, it could be lowered, but again, um, this is, that amount is kind of set by maintenance as, hey, if something, we can handle something that could, could occur under this amount.
Locks them into these two specific vendors.
Well, that, yes, the two vendors that were awarded the bid, yes.
These were the vendors that were specifically awarded, that were working with us to do these installations. And, and my understanding is that that's why they continued to work with those vendors was because if they were to be, do any of the warranty work associated to this, these vendors were the vendors utilized for that work. So that's my, my understanding. Frederick, if there's anything I'm missing on that.
Yes. And along with the fact that there were renewals, um, still available on this contract.
And this comes out of maintenance's budget anyways. If they are to expend any of the funds, it's already budgeted funds that they would use. This, this is just for that expenditure allowance essentially. As Frederick said, so we don't have to come back.
Correct.
Uh, if, if it were for some reason above that threshold or if we didn't have this, then we'd have to come back to the board for anything on these.
Correct.
With this, associated to this work.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Savage?
Yes, L nine. Uh, this is exhaust fans repair and replacement. The question was, was he?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Jivelli, I told you to remind me. Go ahead, please.
Okay. So, um, I have a question, or a couple of questions. So, um, on the N 197 369 RC, um, in December, it went from paying 50 to $60,000 per bid. It was increased up to, up 130,220. And this is just for, this is just for services. So this is not even, this is just for labor. This has nothing to do with any kind of parts or materials. Why the two bids, the two different bids for the same scope of work at two different, at two different, very different costs? Why is that?
Are you, you're on seven?
So I've got, I've got one, I've got N 197 360 RC and then 197 369 RC. Why are those two different bids are different for the same scope of work? That's the question. And then, and the increase.
Yeah, Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Malley's coming up.
Our locksmith bids have never been this high until, uh, this, till this contract.
Ms. Jivelli, this is Susan Malley. How are you doing today?
Um, I'm here.
Good. So you're referencing two different bids and there's only, um, one that I'm seeing on today's, on the agenda that we're reviewing. So can you tell me the name, the number of the other, um, bid that you're referencing, please?
The one N 197 360 RC. And the other one is N 197 369 RC.
Right. So, um, we received these questions just very recently and I was able to go through our master log. And we, we realized that we had, um, we had made it determined to split out the two bids and split services into one and hardware in the other. And so in the past hour or two, I've, I've reviewed that information. We can find additional information if you'd like and respond to that. Now that you're bringing up new information, um, if you would give us a minute to take a look at that, we'd be happy to respond.
Great. Thank you. And you can go on to the next.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Malley. So L nine?
Yes. Uh, no worries. Uh, executive fans repair and replacement. Uh, the question is, was a bid acceptance awarded following the first solicitation? If there was a low number of responsive proposals the first time, why do we have reason to believe that there will be a more robust response for a second solicitation? What requirement changes have occurred and the responses from Ms. Malley?
Okay. So this, this bid we're bringing forward, this ITN and requesting to reject all bids. So what occurred is we received, um, four proposed, four proposals in response to the ITN. And upon the final outcome, we realized we kept whittling away and really just had one competitor at the end. So as we looked at that, we said, you know, is there something in our process that we could change to increase competition because it's always in the best interest of the district to obtain as many qualified bids as possible? So looking back at it, the first thing that I noticed is that the type of solicitation changed from a bid to an invitation to negotiate. So many of the vendors who had responded had submitted bids with the district historically, but they may have never submitted an intent to negotiate. And so when you do that, you have to give a written description of your project approach. You have to apply, uh, provide resumes, past experience, those kinds of things. With a bid, you're straight up given a price. So, um, that was, um, one item. And what we decided is that we should, um, because we changed this from a bid to an invitation to negotiate, that we would like to have an educational session with our vendors. So what that would look like is we would have a pre-proposal conference where we would invite vendors in. We would walk through the ITN packet and should point out where there are differences between an ITN and a bid. So educating. an ITN and a bid. So educating our vendors on switching, you know, how they need to prepare information, because 50% of the vendors were disqualified for not submitting a complete bid packet. Another item that we recognized, and you guys have been very supportive of our small business enterprise policy, we recognized that another, through the evaluation process, another vendor was eliminated because they had not been in business for five years. So we said, maybe we need to take a look at that with the, with the change in solicitation type and eliminating vendors who have not been in business for five years. We eliminated 75% of our competition. So that gave us pause to say, maybe we need to look at this. We're trying to open up to be more inclusive, and because of the process, we've eliminated a lot of vendors. So let's go ahead. And the action that we took was to extend the existing contract while we re-issue a bid and therefore, an ITN. And, and therefore we hope to open up competition to make candidates be more successful in their attempt to do business with the district.
So what is the new requirement for a number of years in business?
That hasn't been decided yet. So the first step would be to reject all proposals so that we can then go back to the table and define those requirements. So there have been some that said, we don't want to do business with anyone who hasn't been in, in business for at least five years. And especially with our small business enterprise program, we are trying to nurture homegrown businesses here. So saying, we want to start up, we want to work with startup businesses, but you can't work with us unless you've been here for five years, a contradiction. So we will go back to the table, we will hear, you know, what is the minimum qualification? It might differ based on the type of service. So we need to get around the table with the maintenance staff who will be using this service and make sure they would have a level of comfort to consider reducing that number of years of experience, which is what's coming from the CFO and the executive director.
So it, it seems to me, I believe it was somebody from Kobe Cooling, that was a man who spoke at one of the recent board meetings. And so I believe that he, he was offered, I'm not sure, what's the term? He was?
So our process is that there is a notice of intent to award.
Okay.
And then as we, that was, the procurement team brought that forward. It was reviewed by the CFO and the executive director, and it was decided that, you know, we've eliminated 75% of our competition. There is a renewal option in the base contract. So the gentleman that came forward saying he received an award, the only award that, the only qualified bid, he held the contract previously, one of the vendors. And so we renewed his contract for six months. So he continues to do business with the district for this very work.
Right. He does, but does this not make his company, and I don't know the man, I don't know his company, does, does this not put them at a disadvantage because he already has his whole bid package out there, does he not? And so would this company that was the one that qualified first round, is, is this not putting his company at a huge disadvantage?
The answer to that is thankfully, the statute supports us in this and says that if you reject all bids, that those proposals are exempt from public record, so no one can receive or view them. So his proposal, many, many prices were, many, the multiple proposals were received, and they, none of them will be released. The other thing is, if you're concerned, if there is a concern about pricing on our website, all pricing from the past bids, right there in black and white, what everyone bid, that full and open disclosure of information shows everyone what we paid last time and the time before that. And so those, those rates of what we're currently paying are public information now.
Okay, so his bid, all his packet is, cannot be public record?
That is correct.
All right. So the only people that know what it was are the people that were on the committee. Who was on the committee?
We have different people on all the committees.
Who was on this particular committee? I, I just don't understand how, we've done this so many times, how all of a sudden, kind of change midstream like this. So we're going to reject this person that has apparently, since he was renewed for six months, has done a good job. And I'm, I'm, I'm just really curious to hear what, and, and I fully support local businesses, but could it be that there are businesses that after the fact decided to regroup and throw in their hat, their hat in the ring? I don't want to see people that are not, not fully qualified, and I'd be really curious to know who's on the team. And that, those are my comments.
Okay, so we, we could obtain that information. I will share with you that historically, this has been a multiple award. There have always been multiple firms, and here we are decreasing the pool 75% to a single vendor, and we think it's in the best interest of the district. If one vendor's fully engaged and can't meet our services, then we'd like to have multiple awardees.
I, I understand. I just don't want to see a timeframe for how long somebody's in business be customized to brand new startup businesses.
Absolutely. I think that that's, that we're in agreement with that. And as the board supported the small business enterprise policy, which is to grow, to grow our local and small businesses, you know, shutting the door and telling them, after you've been here five years, there's a bit of a conflict. And so we could revisit that topic.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, because the way I look at it is you need to have, you need to make sure that you have multiple people. You never want to have just one person that you have to rely on, because seriously, they can hold you hostage. So you always want to make sure that you have other avenues where you can go to, you know, for the services that we may need in order to make sure that we can keep running. So I, I, I thank you for that information, and of course, not hurting, hurting anyone either.
Well, and that, that was my point, Ms. Jordan. And I, I don't know if that person could be awarded and then re, I guess you can't do that, reopen for the same, for the same contract.
No, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Dr. Savage?
Thank you. I believe the next was actually in the attorney's recommendation section. So this was an approval, this is item 01, approval of request for reimbursement by Christine Patrica of legal fees. So would you like me to read these questions? This is going to be answered by Mr. P. Brunner, so just, I'm happy to read them if you'd like.
I think the first one, the first, many of the questions was with regards to the amount. And so this morning I did sit down with staff, and we took a look at everything, and the amount has been revised to $600. And I'll tell you how that happened. When looking at the bills, there appeared to be additional entries, but when I looked at it, I realized that these were not additional entries. So for case 21-131, the actual amount was $390. In one of those lines, we took off $60 because that was related to another case. So we took that out, and that came out to $390. And then for case number 20-179, it's $210. So for a total of $600. And that has been revised on board docs.
So questions? Ms. Gittens?
My concern is, there, there have been a lot of, I think almost all of us have had the opportunity to be selected to have an ethics complaint against them. And I was not aware that any of the ones against Ms. Patrica had gone forward as an actual case. And I, I mean, I can speak for myself, when, when several have been sent against me, I did not retain an attorney until it came back as an actual, there is a finding, there is a case. And we all know how that works with DOE and Tallahassee. They send a determination, this is not, we are not going forward on this, or we are going forward on this. And to me, it seems that you should be, actually wait until it is an actual case, because you have no idea if you even need a lawyer. And in these cases, there was nothing, basically they said nothing to see here. So my concern is, if every time someone mentions something and you get a lawyer, is that what you want, you know, the board to pay for? I can understand if there's issues that, that come out of it, but I, I, I don't know that I can, I support this.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
And actually, the first part of what Mr. P. Brunner said is exactly what I asked about the invoices not adding up and questioned the relevance. And it was exactly, I came out to the same amount that you did. And I'll, I'll be very honest, that's, that's kind of a disturbing error on there. And I'm wondering if Ms. Patrica jumped in and said, no, that's not, well, she, okay, so you're shaking your head. No, she didn't jump in. And I think you said in an email, there are other invoices that haven't, we haven't seen yet, that she's going to be asking for more taxpayer money because somebody pointed a finger at her when all of us, most all of us have had the same thing and, you know?
So this is, this is a, a board conversation in terms of what the board wants to do when these types of things happen. I can only advise you what the law says with in relevance to this. There was, there were three complaints that I know of that have been filed. One of them is not concluded, but the other two are concluded with a, an actual order from the Commission on Ethics. So based on that, then she does have the right to come back and ask for reimbursement. If the board does not want to, if the board wants to change the policy, because you do have a policy that addresses this as well, and there's case law that addresses it. So if the board wants to have a discussion on that, we can have a discussion on that. I mean, it, it is what it is in terms of where we are now.
Madam Chair, can you, through the chair, can you please explain the difference in filed and order? Order is, is that saying that there is a letter saying, yes, you are under investigation?
Okay, good, very good question, Ms. Gittens. So what has happened is there was a, first of all, this was under, before the Florida Commission on Ethics. So that's the first thing. A complaint was filed, just like you would in, in a regular court case, you file a complaint. And that complaint was processed by the Florida Commission on Ethics, and they actually met to review that complaint and make a determination as to what they wanted to do with that complaint. They issued what they call a public report and an order dismissing the complaint. And inside that public report and order, it describes what the legalities and the reasons why that complaint was dismissed pursuant to whatever applicable ethical rule that was being questioned. They would explain that. And then, in this particular instance, they explained why this was not, did not meet that threshold for legal sufficiency.
So there was actually no time that Ms. Patrica had to defend herself necessarily because the only action by that, the, the Ethics Board was to say that there is no case. So my point is, if, if there's no case, it's.
Well, there, there is a case by virtue of a complaint being filed. That opens up a case. Now whether or not you need to have a hearing, whether or not there's a further investigation, whether or not they take additional steps, that's another thing. But whether or not there was a case open, there was a case that was opened.
So is it every time there's a case opened or anything, somebody files a complaint against one of us, we need to lawyer up and then turn in the bill?
So.
Before anything is done?
So the, the rule requires that the person prevail. The dismissal is considered that the person prevailed because there was a ruling. So if there was not a ruling, that's one thing. But there was an actual ruling from the Florida Commission on Ethics that explains why they made this particular finding.
But their finding was that there's not anything going forward.
I agree.
So.
They dismissed it based on lack of legal sufficiency, and they explained it in their order. But there was still a ruling.
Okay. So here's my point, and I will bring this forward for motion if we need to tomorrow, that we need to say in writing, in a policy, that being filed against is not, you know, reimbursable unless you are accused, actually accused of something, and it is in writing.
So.
You are accused. You, no, I mean.
I think, I think what she's saying.
But a case is happening.
Well, so, so let's, let's be careful a little bit. So when the complaint is filed, these are allegations. So somebody says you violated the rule because I think one of them was about misusing your position with regard to the superintendent search and dealing with the interim superintendent. So that was one of the cases. Now, the, the commission meets and reviews it. And the commission then makes a determination as to what's going to happen with that particular case. And it just so happens that the commissioner, the commissioners made a decision that they did not believe that it met the criteria, and then it was dismissed. Now, that's a case. That, that, there was a complaint, but wait a minute, that is a case. There was a complaint that was filed, and an order was issued. Now if the board says what we want to see is an actual defense where you have a hearing and there is evidence presented, and there's an actual investigation, if the board wants to set parameters in 1.15 in its policy, you can set the parameters in terms of what you, you want in your policy. But as the policy stands now, if a person secures an attorney to defend themselves against an allegation or a complaint, and they are successful in that allegation and that, that defense, then, you know, that's what the policy says, plus there's case law.
But she was not successful. They did not pursue the situation.
She was successful because they dismissed it.
So it's not like she was successful. She did nothing but to get an, an attorney. It was dismissed before that attorney really had to do anything.
Well.
So I, I mean, that's just me. I'm sorry.
I think that's a policy question for the board to be able to discuss. And then I will also say that, you know, these are, a request was made, a recommendation was brought forth, it falls in line with the statute. The ultimate decision is the board as to how it wants to handle, because you have to make the determination as to whether or not you agree with my analysis that it falls within that purview. I do think that it does from a legal standpoint. And if you want to change your policy to make it a little tighter, then it's up to the board to change the policy.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'm going to pull this. I'll put it in writing. We're done with this meeting. I think this is a waste of taxpayer money. Mrs. Patrica has a law degree, for heaven's sake. I hear what you're saying, but I totally agree with Mrs. Gittens. I, I can tell you that a couple of years ago, when someone who was the former professional standards director here in the district filed a long complaint against me, I just took out my computer and I typed up, and it was dismissed. But, you know, I didn't even think about charging people for something like that. And, and I just find it outrageous to be, after the fact, we, as a board, I don't care what the policy says, I'm pulling it, I'm voting against it, I don't agree. I think the only time. it, I don't agree. I think the only time, as Mrs. Gittens said, I agree 100%, that if there was some kind of litigation, that, that they found legal sufficiency and, and moved on with it, then I believe that this would be warranted. But...
So let me, let me be careful a little bit also with the word litigation.
Or any kind of, all right, I'm...
Well, the only reason I say that, because I know people have questioned that. There is a case, because normally you would say a legal action or litigation, a real case, something along those lines. But I do want to make sure that we are careful because there is a case that does equate Commission on Ethics cases to litigation, even though it's not necessarily in the court. It is considered litigation in Ellison versus Reed. That is the case that does that. Now, again, the board has the power to be able to change its policy and to make whatever recommendations and the parameters for reimbursement that it so chooses to do. I, I am just the vessel that's providing you the information based on the request.
I, I understand that, and I appreciate it, your diligence with this, but I will be, as soon as I go back to my office, writing you officially, board, that I am pulling this and I will be voting against it. I find it outrageous.
Ms. Jivinelli, did you have any comments?
I do, actually. And somebody thought of the fact that you could have a lawsuit. That's one thing. Second, consult on what is coming, but it was a two-year delay. I think that that would have been something that should have happened, and maybe it did. Can I ask that question, Ms. Bruno?
Board member comes to me with an ethics complaint, I will tell them to, I will take a look at it, and then my recommendation is always to contact counsel to be able to provide you with legal advice. That's how I always, always have done it, whenever it has come to my attention since my tenure here.
Okay. So my question is, did she come to you with these issues?
She, yeah, she just said that she would have advised her to get counsel.
If, if there's...
That's what she says. That's what she advises everybody. She didn't say that she would have taken her.
Well, I, what, that is what I will advise everyone, to seek counsel, because pursuant to the rules for me to represent a board member individually on this type of issue could be conflictual. So I always, no matter what it is, if, no matter what the situation, if it's something that is unrelated, I will advise to seek counsel. People ask me about campaign issues, the ones that I will provide advice, which is within my purview, is any ethical question. So I will answer any ethical question that is brought before me.
I'm still on the call. May I answer that question directly?
Can she, that's...
If, if Ms. Patrica's on the phone, she can answer the question.
Yes, Ms. Patrica, go ahead.
Yes, I absolutely went to the board attorney for advice on how to proceed, and I was told to, to get an attorney. And the, the fact that I have a law degree does not make me an expert in ethics complaints. I practice in the area of a state and trust, and I am not a licensed attorney in the state of Florida.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Jivinelli?
Okay, yes, I'd like to finish. Second of all, these, these fees are over a year old, and they're just now coming before the board. And then, another question is, these are alleged misconduct rose out of the performance of her, her official duties while serving as public purpose. That's a question, really, because I don't know what the incidents were. Not, and not knowing what the complaints were about, it's hard to make any kind of decision if it was in her official duties. I'm sorry, I'm trying to... So, I mean, not knowing these things, it's hard to make a decision, because when I look at the invoices, they mention FBA, they mention campaign, something to do with campaign and elections, and that's nothing to do with official duty. And that, you know, election law issues and, and the support of, from a contributor, that has nothing to do. I don't see what that relates to a school board member. That's it. Thank you.
In my legal analysis, I do believe that they did. The one was with regards to her communication with a constituent verse, via social media and via email and responding to that constituent about some things that had happened with her daughter. That's definitely within her official duties. And then the other was with regards to her role in the superintendent search and an organization that she belonged to, as well as sabotaging the interim superintendent. So both of those, I believe, would fall under her official duties. And the board, when it makes its decision, really pursuant to case law, is the one that decides whether or not it is the public purpose. I do think that there is a public purpose with regards to the superintendent search and whether or not there was any evidence to substantiate that she interfered or sabotaged the interim superintendent. That, I mean, that's, that's official duties and public purpose.
So my concern, again, is setting a precedent regarding litigation on board members when we sometimes have board members that make statements that, that wasn't anything to do with the board, and we're not, it's not up for us to defend and pay for those items. So, and I'm not going to dispute or argue the difference between, you know, what these different claims are and stuff, because I don't even know them, the details of that. And in fact, I have to remind Ms. Bruno, Ms. Patrica accused me of being involved in one that I had no idea what she was even talking about, and I brought that to your attention at the time. So I was accused of being involved in this. So I can't support something that I was even accused of being involved in when I wasn't. But yet, I was, at the dais, I was accused of it. So that's my concern, that this was discovered prior to, that I didn't even know anything about. And so that's concerning as well. So, I mean, we, as a board, need to discuss the level of which we get involved in litigation on individual board members.
Respond to that, because I don't think we can pick and choose who we're going to do what for. It has to be consistent across whatever that policy is, correct?
I understand what you're saying, but...
In the state law?
It depends on the complaint. And that's what we don't know anything about, the details of that.
Well, I, I...
I don't anyway.
In my, in my email, I did indicate that I would be forwarding a memo, so I will forward that memo for the board's consideration that will have a little bit more details. We do have to be careful that everyone is treated the same inequitably, but I do hear also the board's concern in terms of what level triggers a reimbursement. And I think this is a larger discussion for the board to have to set those parameters. Right now, I don't have those parameters. I only have what the law indicates. And so, you know, this is, this is for the board's discussion. This is the board's decision.
Ms. Jivinelli, do you have any other questions?
No, I would agree with what Mr. P. Bruno just said, because I think we do have to figure out at what point do we get involved, or, you know, we, this can be happening a lot, is what I'm concerned with. So what precedent the statute is going to set, because when you have board members making statements and running rogue, it shouldn't be us, to defend and pay for everything that, every time they have litigation or they make someone mad. And that has happened recently, quite a bit lately. And that's, that's, that's a big red flag for me and an alarm that, you know, you don't, where, what, what do we start in, I guess. Thank you.
So one thing that I will say, if a board member is involved in a particular situation that deals with her official duties and serves a public purpose, but does not succeed, then there is no reimbursement that is due. Only if they are, if they succeed in that, in that the, the action is dismissed, or they actually win on the merits.
Okay. I am, I'm going to move on, because I know that we have definitely went well, well beyond, and there's a...
Chair Jordan, I just think you can give clarification, please.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Chris. Ms. Patrica?
The first is, just to give you back on what Attorney P. Bruno just said, I did prevail in these, these two matters, which is why it's being brought in front of the board, number one. Number two, the third issue has not yet been heard by, by the Ethics Commission, and, and that is why I have not submitted anything, because there's, there's been no determination whatsoever. It's not yet been heard by the commission. So I don't want anyone to think that, you know, that, that matter is non-doing, or that probable cause has been found, or legal sufficiency has been found. They simply have not heard the, the matter yet. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we are going to have to move two of the items that were on our agenda, agenda, to another, well, to tomorrow and another day, because we're at the five o'clock hour now, and we still have two more to go through. So Ms. Gittens is not here. She had asked a question. So Dr. Savage, if you can just give the information, and then everybody will have it. Thank you.
I actually have Ms. Eba still here, till the bitter end, if you'd like to, to give us the answer to these last two questions. While she's coming up, I'll go ahead and read it. P. 1 is the approval of the adopted resolution modifying the boundaries of the board member residence areas. The question was, where does this state that we will follow the county commission choice? And how can we do that if they still have upcoming meetings to finalize? Ms. Eba?
The decision, good afternoon, board. The decision to use map 5, which is the map that has been recommended, was made by the school board at your redistricting briefing held on November 16th, 2021. The school district is not required to follow the county commissioners' legislative boundaries, although they have also selected map 5. The school board, through the series of meetings that were held on this topic through the months of October and November, determined that this was the most suitable map for our school district because, and this is just a quick summary of the discussion that you had, the current boundaries are not much different than map 5. So therefore, it creates the least amount of change from the current boundaries to the new boundaries. It uses corkscrew as a boundary, which was important to you, as you explained. This map doesn't put two board, more, two board members in the same district, and it would make it easier for voters to only refer to one map between the county and the school district. So primarily, it had to do with the limited amount of change from the current boundaries to the next boundaries, and you're making it easier for the, for people to vote on one set of districts, not getting confused from the county to the school board, and not putting two board members in, in the same district in the future.
Thank you.
But it is not required that you use the county's boundaries.
Thank you.
Last but not least, a P. 2, Approval to Revise the Plan for Student Enrollment, 2223. And the question was, in light of the capacity issues that arose from the South Zone and Quadruple A, I would like to see the updated enrollment data for each school and data showing the schools with the highest enrollment of students that could go to another less enrolled school. Again, and finally, Ms. Eba?
So we, that information is information we are in the process of pulling together, but we do not have it right now as part of our annual update of school enrollment, which includes updates on our projections, our capa, our current capacities, what our future capacities are, and other planning issues. We have contracted with Davis Demographics, who have already begun their work on this topic. They will complete it in early 2022, and at that point, we will have either a briefing or a workshop meeting so that we can review that data with the board, but we do not have it today.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your patience and hanging out with us. We really appreciate that. And I'm going to really just ask really quick, and most of my, our colleagues are not here, is that as much as we appreciate all of the six pages of questions, if we could hopefully get these questions sooner to the superintendent's office, so that way they can respond to the appropriate people, so that way those answers will be answered. And it's so hard to try to keep this in a 30-minute to an hour, and then, I mean, we tried so hard to make this happen today, and we still failed on this. So I do apologize for that and that you all had to stay here with us throughout this, even though we enjoy your company. Dr. Savage, you want to speak on the last two items that we were just going to? Is that...
Let's see, we had, I believe, Ms. McClung was available for the workshop topics, but obviously, we're missing some board members. So we'll, and then also the Riverdale piece, we actually had some additionals beyond just our district staff. We actually had other folks as well, part of the design team, so they'll be on tomorrow's meeting. We were able to reposition that for tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you. So seeing it is 5:04, this meeting is adjourned until tomorrow. Thank you all.
Thank you.